Okay. How many hours we got?
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this morning's February 18th, 2025 Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to start with the invocation from Pastor Franzen, and if you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Gould. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Supervisors, Supervisors, and honored guests. Father, we thank you for this meeting today, Lord. We just pray that as the meeting goes on and the business is taken care of, Lord, that it'll be done in a smooth and orderly manner, while all the business that needs to be taken care of will be taken care of today. And I just pray that you would put a special edge of protection and blessing upon this entire building. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03, A 3, 4, and 7. Looking for motion in action to call for an executive session to be held on March 3rd, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03, A 3, 4, and 9 to discuss items noticed on the agenda within Asher.
So moved.
Heard that motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Official business to come before the board. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Esalen.
Good morning. Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee and legislative reports. Supervisor Letman. Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Athena Day, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Martin.
Nothing else, nothing to report.
Thank you. Supervisor Borelli.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have something to report from the CSA LPC meetings that I've been attending. Members and folks in the audience, what this, they do is they go through all the legislation that's going through legislature to brief all the supervisors to see if anything is hindering or will potentially hinder or help the counties be able to do business. And one of the items, a piece of legislation that was put up was SCR 10004. It is a prohibited tax for monitoring vehicle mileage. This is a, this is a referral to the ballot. What it would do is via voter approval, it would amend the Arizona Constitution to prohibit a political subdivision from, A, imposing a tax or a fee on any person based on their miles traveled in a motor vehicle, or B, enact any rule or law to monitor or limit the vehicle miles traveled by a person. Of course, this got amended based on recommendations before it went into committee that they would, they would, they would support with. They were actually opposed unless it was amended. So I reached out to the sponsor of the bill and I have them, I had them amend to exclude vehicles owned by, owned and operated by the county political subdivisions and even commercial fleet management. So that we, last week we got an up, two weeks ago, we got an update that it passed out on a committee. The CSA went neutral on the bill because it was amended. Well, I brought it back for, to put it on the agenda to vote on to approve, seeing as how the legislature, meaning the sponsor of the bill, agreed to make sure that the counties and political subdivisions could be able to manage their own fleet management and also commercial fleet management. So I wanted to have the, our position changed to support the bill. So we did vote on it to vote to do support. However, I must note that Miracopa County did bring up that they were worried about the EPA and the air restrictions that they have on Miracopa County under Rule 205 of the EPA on their air quality. Well, I'm going to reach out, reach out to the sponsor and let him know that this type of data, and people are thinking, why are we pushing against something like this? Well, because there's always a camel's nose under the tent. Because if you can grab this kind of data and the federal government, i.e. the EPA, unelected bureaucracy, they could use that data to manipulate things to impose more regulations on the city or county. So that's, that's going to be his argument too, that, but anyway, CSA did vote to support the measure going to the ballot. Hopefully this passes out of the Senate and gets back to the House and gets it on the ballot. Bill number, SCR 1004.
Thank you, Supervisor Borelli. The only thing I have to report, and I'm sure that we have a water update this morning. I still won't go too much into it, but Senator Dunn introduced SB 1520 on the rural groundwater side. So with that, do we have the water report? Yeah. Madam Clerk.
Yes, I'm Wayne.
Hello, Mr. Ponder. Are you there with, are you with us? Mr. Ponder. Is he, is he on?
He is. We.
Wait for him to pop up on our video screen soon. Having a technical issue?
I believe so. They're working on it.
Okay, we'll go to County Manager's Report while they figure that out. County Manager's Report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I do not have a report this morning.
Okay. Is IT or somebody got?
They are working on it. They, apparently they can hear them in teams, but not in the auditorium.
Okay. We have a proclamation. I'll do the proclamation and then we'll check back, okay? The proclamation is approve the proclamation declaring the month of March 2025 as procurement month and March 12th, 2025 as Procurement Professionals Day in Mojave County. Tara, does you need to say anything about that or? Okay. And I don't, I don't have a proclamation in front of me, otherwise I would, I would read that. You want me to read it into the record? Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and efficacy of both government and private business, and whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, professional, procurement professionals add value to the organization by performing such functions as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement initiatives, and cultivating working relationships with the supplier community and other departments within the organization, and whereas public procurement professionals in Mojave County and in other public and private organizations have tremendous influence on the economic conditions in the United States with accumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars, and whereas the public procurement professionals in Mojave County are committed to providing high caliber strategic logistical and operational support of all departments within Mojave County, and whereas the public procurement professionals in Mojave County recognize, support, and practice the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by NIGP, the Institute for Public Procurement, as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession, and whereas the Mojave County Procurement Department received the National Procurement Institute's Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award for the 19th time in 2024, and whereas NIGP has proclaimed the month of March as procurement month to further expand the awareness of public procurement's value within an organization to governmental officials, the general public, private businesses, and corporate leaders, and whereas NPI has proclaimed March 12th, 2025 as Procurement Professionals Day to expand the awareness of the, of the public procurement professionals' value to the organization and community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mojave County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize the public procurement profession and the Mojave County Procurement Department for its impact within business, industry, and government, and proclaim the month of March 2025 as procurement month and recognize the individual contribution of public procurement professionals, proclaiming March 12th, 2025 as Procurement Professionals Day. Congratulations, Tara. Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gould.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Thank you for that. You heard that motion. Do I have a second? Heard that motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Do we have?
They're, they're not ready yet. They'll let me know as soon as they do.
Okay, let me know. So we're going to go on to consent agenda. Supervisor Martin, would you like to pull any of our items off of consent today?
I would like to see. 23, 24.
23, 24. Thank you. Supervisor Borelli? No? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 11, 14, 27, 32, 37, and 38.
Thank you. Supervisor Letman. Thank you, and I have no additional as well. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 11, 14, 23, 24, 27, 32, 37, and 38.
So moved.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Move to item number 11. Supervisor Gould.
Let's see. Mr. Chairman, I just had a question about what we're doing here. I get an explanation. I get an explanation. Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould. So what this item is, is during last year's budget process, the Human Resources Department had submitted a budget initiative which reduced some expense line items in order to offset the cost of a new module, an onboarding module for the NeoGo software that we use for, that HR uses. The initiative, as it was originally submitted, was based on an early quote from the software vendor. They later received an updated estimate, which was a little bit higher. It was still a net savings to the county. The initiative was amended and it was approved by the board as part of the approved budget. The general entry to update that, the original estimate to the new revised estimate was never completed, and so this is just really a housekeeping item to, to get that in order.
So we just never updated the increase, price increase when we passed the budget?
That's correct. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Otherwise I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
For that motion, do I have a second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do you have it, so ordered. Item number 14, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't see in the backup on this what department these new cars were being purchased for, and that's my question. I don't know if, if they're actually for the motor pool or if they're going out to one of the departments.
What was mine?
That's a Hellcat?
Yeah.
Director Lotosky. Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board. These two vehicles are going to be a part of our motor pool car rental fleet, both our long-term and short-term car rentals. We try to maintain a diverse grouping of vehicles for the motor pool fleet, so not a specific department, but actually our motor pool, long-term and short-term rental fleet.
That makes sense. Thank you, Director.
Any other questions? Otherwise I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
For that motion, do I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do you have it, so ordered. Move to item number 23, Supervisor Martin.
I would like to see or hear exactly what this is all about because I, I think we've all got probably letters or emails or something from constituents asking about this, and I would like to be briefed on this so I know exactly what they're talking about. It sure seems like there's a lot of people out there in Yucca that are concerned about this, and like I say, I'd just like to hear from Mr. Lotosky exactly what this is.
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Martin. The county, through its Public Works Department, maintains a abandonment and easement process, namely for roads of ingress and egress easements like these, as well as public utility easements. So these are either public rights ways or public easements, in this case the easement. This item, item 23, is very similar to an item the board considered last board meeting in which an application was presented to the Public Works Department, and Public Works has an obligation to present any public petitions to the board. And what we do is we like to present them in such a manner where we first approach the board simply to acknowledge it, and acknowledge it in such a manner that Public Works then has that direction from the board to carry out the process. And what I'm saying is the due diligence, the public notices, everything that is part of the process by which the board can then entertain a decision on whether or not to extinguish the easement. So that will be coming in the future. So if the board were to just acknowledge and direct staff to proceed with carrying out the easement research and noticing process, which is kind of labor intensive, but there is a fee associated with it, so the fee offsets largely our, 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 our staff efforts. So getting to the specific area, this is in the Santa Fe Ranches area, and in this instance, the applicant does desire to extinguish the easements on her part of the property. So this will be one half of the ingress egress easements on what I believe is on the west side of her property and on the south side of her property. It would leave one half of the public ingress and egress easements intact. I believe the applicant also wants to extinguish a, an adjacent public utility easement. So in a nutshell, that is the situation. Public Works has no opinion on this because we have not done any research or noticing. We do not know what the adjacent property owners think of this. Of course, they will be noticed, so we have no opinion on this. We are just doing our duty and bringing to the board the application to be acknowledged.
Okay.
We do have a couple of people that have signed up to speak, so if we have additional questions from the board, we'll bring you that back. First person up is Carol Wilk, followed by Randall Barrett.
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter and all members of the Board of Supervisors. I don't really know what to speak on, that's why I put, if you had any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. I don't know what the opposition is to the actual getting the easement extinguished other than the person who made the complaint with the county was the one who initiated this process for me. So I have a gate, when I bought the property, the gate and the fence that was there on the property, I didn't have any idea that there was any kind of easement problem with that gate and fence, and I know that it, this doesn't affect, my property actually is the last property on a dead end road, and then the other side of it is just BLM land. All the other properties surrounding mine have access easements from all different roads in all different directions, so it doesn't negatively impact any of my neighbors, which I know will be part of the county's process in showing that. But the only, the only reason why I'm doing this is because it would cost me over $5,000 to remove the gate, because it's a big telephone pole kind of western style entrance to the property and the fencing, and I'd rather leave it intact and pay the $600 fee to the county to have the easement extinguished since it doesn't affect anybody else. So that's really it. If, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? If we have any, later on.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Good morning. My name is Randall Barrett. I live in the, excuse me, my timer didn't work right. I don't see a timer, I can know my three minutes, so it's right there, thank you. My name's Randall Barrett, I live in the Yucca area, I live in the Santa Fe Ranch POA, and the reason that I'm opposing this, and I oppose the one, I now am opposing the one for Rob Hooper, two weeks ago that went through to the Public Works, is because there's history here. They're on the board, both of these individuals, Wilk and Hooper, are on the board for the POA, for the Santa Fe Ranch POA, and there's one other also that was filed against. And this board, the POA board, had filed a complaint to the county and fined one of our owners for a easement violation while, we now know, while they had easement violations on their own properties. So because obviously the POA refused to act against them and to fine them, this is our only alternative, is to turn them into the county like they did when they brought their owners and let the county handle it. And in this process of having that turned in, within a very short period of time after it was, complaints were turned in, somehow Hooper and Wilk and the other one were notified of the complaint and given a process by which they could follow through to get that relieved through getting rid of the easements. I have a problem with that. When you have all these people out here who have followed the rules, come to the county, they said those are roads, those easements are roads, they have road names, you cannot put your fences in there. I don't care if they were there when they bought the property or not. The point is that we have to follow these rules. And to now have one of our sitting supervisors, Mr. Gould, assist them to find a way out of this violation is bothering to me. Mr. Gould sent out an email to all of the people of the Santa Fe Ranch POA where he told them not to vote for me for the board, that said I was telling half-truth, although he didn't specify what those were. He said that he is friends with Rob Hooper and his wife. I'm sure he's friends with all the board. Rob Hooper spoke with me because I am a county supervisor for the Yucca area. He also spoke with the county surveyor where Rob was advised of the option under Arizona law to abandon the easement. Now I know that that provision is there, but is this the way to abuse such a thing? To have help, possibly Mr. Gould should recuse himself because of this conflict of interest? And so I'm opposed to this simply because this is being done to avoid them having to pay consequences for having their fences and the easements. This is not a good reason to remove these easements. Thank you for your time.
Can I open it up, open it back up to the board? Does anybody have any additional questions for Director Lotosky?
Director Lotosky, I do have one question, if you could come back up to the podium really Process matters, obviously, when you have these issues. Can you just sort of basically walk the board and the public, just, just readers digest version of your process on these?
Correct. Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, the process by which staff goes about performing the due diligence with regard to an easement abandonment would be, we would notice the adjacent property owners that would be accessing these potential roadways to be extinguished, or portions thereof to be extinguished. We also post for the public out in the field, and staff will also be surveying these areas just to get familiar with exactly, you know, what, what may be being occupied in these easements as well. So we are able to come back then with a recommendation to the board with regard to, you know, what, any feedback we receive from either the property owners or in this case as well the utilities, because there's a public utility easement in play, and this will be under a public hearing that will be set to a future date when staff has all the material and responses ready to present to the board.
Obviously, we have to stay objective in these types of issues. What, what do you base your recommendation as far as, you know, public safety, mobility, these types of things? Can you just touch on those a little bit?
Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, this, this is really one of these things where it's a case-by-case basis. Definitely if there were some other entities, public safety entities, utilities even, that either have existing infrastructure in the easement or might be affected, have an undue impact to the extinguishment process, maybe it's a, you know, fire response agency or something, then, then staff would certainly make that more of a prominent finding, if you will, that, that could shape our recommendations. We also, we always do our level best to provide the board with all of the, both supports as well as, as anybody who, who objects to it. The one thing I will say, and I should have mentioned this earlier, the only thing that would probably preclude staff from bringing one of these petitions in front of the board is if the easement extinguishment actually severed legal access to a property. That violates state law. Staff is not going to put something before the board that violates state law. In this case, that's not in play, but I will just say, and this is probably my only immediate finding, if we were to extinguish one half of the ingress and egress easement on both sides, it would bring the easement on the one road to only 30 feet and on the other road to only 42 feet. That is less than the minimum right of way required if the property owners ever wanted to approach the county to take these roads in for maintenance. They're not in the county's road maintenance system, but that could be something in the future that could preclude it unless more right of way was acquired.
Appreciate it. Any other, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me explain a little bit about the area. This is Stagecoach Trails at Santa Fe Ranch. It's 2,800 40 acre parcels. Around every one of these parcels is an easement. Depends, some of them are 84 feet wide, some are 60 feet wide. They, we had trouble from the county finding out what these actually were, whether they were rights of way or whether they were easements. But if you look at it, these 40 acre parcels are broken into blocks of eight parcels that are a mile by a half a mile. Behind them, there's an easement, beside each one of them, there's an easement, and so on through the entire development. So people are unclear, you know, what happens is people look at what their neighbor did and that, when they're putting the fence up or whatnot, and then they, they do the same thing and think, well, my neighbor did this, so that must be right. So people have fences that are inside of that easement. And we just had our annual meeting on Saturday, this issue came up, because this is basically an outgrowth over an election for Property Owners Association, that's what this is about. Mr. Barrett went out and, and turned in the board members, because that's what he could find as a wedge to, as a campaign issue. He dragged me into his campaign, made some accusations that are untrue and unfounded. I put out a letter that addressed those things, addressed the process, and told people not to vote for him, which is my right. I'm a property owner. If you're going to put out a letter that lies about me, I'm probably not going to endorse you. That's just how it works. But anyway, back to this, this issue is these, so you have effectively 82 foot dead space between these two parcels. Mr. Hooper, which was the previous one, I believe that's a 60 foot easement, there was a fence put up before Mr. Hooper owned the parcel, it's about five foot from the property line, so I'm assuming that the previous owner thought if he stayed back five foot, he was in good shape. This is not a road. These are just, they're pins, they're property corner pins, they've never been graded, they're not used. That Mr. Peterson is, who Mr. Barrett was talking about before, that individual gated off a road. He threw up a gate across the road and blocked the easement for people. They, he came to the county and tried to abandon that, and we told them, no, we're not going to give you that road as your private driveway. That was unanimous vote of the Board of Supervisors. Since then, he's decided that he's going to go on YouTube and make fictitious YouTube movies about me where he hires an AI newsroom, where it makes it look like I'm somehow in corruption with the board, or the property owners' board in some grand conspiracy to suppress the property values of Yucca. This is the same kind of garbage, but basically you've got easements all the way around these parcels. There's no utilities in them, there'll probably never be any utilities in them. There's no utilities in the area, it's basically an off-grid area. The problem is Mr. Hooper owns two, you can't fence those two off into one 80 acre area because you have an easement running through the middle of it. So that's problematic. Ms. Wilk has a gate in hers, her property backs up to BLM land, she's at the end of a cul-de-sac. It's really not going to be any harm to anybody. As long as our fee is set correctly, there's no burden on the county and state statute allows the property owners to come and request that these be abandoned, just like anything else. These are not that uncommon, we do these every, one every other month or so. But it's kind of a unique situation because you're taking up a bunch of land with these easements and they're never going to get used as easements. If they, if they split them into fours, generally the people have been running a cul-de-sac off of the, the existing paved road to get access, so they, they don't block any legal access.
Thank you.
All we're doing with this item that's in front of us today is approving a process.
That's correct.
So any discussion or I'd entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
For that motion. For that motion, second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do you have it, so ordered. Item number 24, Supervisor Martin.
Same, same issue, same questions.
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Martin, this item is very routine. Public Works processes numerous parcel plots through the course of the year, and when a parcel plot is created, oftentimes with the creation of new lots, there is ingress and egress easements that have to be established for access to these new lots, and that's all this is. This is to recognize that the, and to ask the board to acknowledge and accept, to actually accept, to grant the public ingress and egress and utility easements to service the various lots that are created by this parcel plot. The county has no obligations with regard to, you know, anything, if there was ever a maintenance being pursued, that would have to be handled under a different petition process and everything. This is just to establish the public easements.
Okay, thank you.
We have no one signed up to speak, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, Supervisor Borelli.
Is this the adjoining property from the previous agenda?
No.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
For that motion.
For that motion, do I have a second? For that motion and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. I'm going to pause. Madam Clerk, do we have water lobbyist on?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Ponder, are you with us?
Testing. Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chair, Supervisors, thanks for the opportunity. We are in the 37th day of the legislative session. 1,678 bills have been dropped. I feel like a disproportionate number of them have been water related. Sorry?
Continue.
Okay. Feel like a disproportionate number of them have been water related. I'll just remind everyone, our sort of three guiding principles over the last several years on water legislation have been, one, to seek rural groundwater legislation, two, to protect Colorado River water, and three, to preserve the rural, to preserve the groundwater code. There have been a number of groundwater code related items that, that we've been directed to weigh in on because they've really diminished the groundwater code in, in the event that either they affect irrigation on expansion areas or in the event that the Qualify Valley would become an AMA, an active management area, they would really affect the legal framework on how groundwater rights one would be, would be initiated and then it would actually create a disparate mechanism for how groundwater rights would be handled in the future and, and mess those up frankly. One of the bills called a temporary non-expansion area, the county has weighed in on each of the last four years in opposition to. So we, we just maintain that position. We supported a bill to defend the Colorado River Compact. That is one that was run by Gail Griffin this year. In fact, she, she thanked me for supporting that yesterday. It was an appropriation of $1 million. I will just note that the governor, in her budget, had an appropriation amount of $3 million on that. There was an effort to add an amendment to that, to add an additional $2 million to that appropriation that was rejected, but we, we were supportive of that amount. There were another two bills that we have been supportive of for the past four years that is to support some on farm efficiency grants. Those grants have made their way around the state, including to entities within Mojave County that help make irrigation models, irrigation techniques more efficient in basins across the state for agricultural industry, which in turn will diminish the outflow that comes out of our basins and translates into sort of more benefit to us. So we were supportive of those. One item that we're keeping an eye on, we were encouraged to keep an eye on this by Jamie Kelly from Mojave County Water Authority, is House Bill 2727. It's on the House Natural Resources Agenda for this Thursday, where there's a special natural resources meeting for this Thursday. An amendment has not been posted to this bill. It's a bill run by Mr. Biassucci for La Paz County. They want to create their own water authority. We just want to make sure that in creating their own water authority, that it does not impact the water authority that, that aids in, in the, I'm sorry, Lake Havasu City and Bullhead City's water systems. So I, I'm confident that Mr. Biassucci would not want to do something like that, but we just want to make sure that the language is, is correct when that comes across and I will keep an eye on that and connect with Jamie on that over the next couple of days. With respect to the bill that Mr. Lingefelter mentioned just a moment ago, Mr. Dunn introduced a strike everything amendment to Senate Bill 1520 on rural groundwater. It came out on Friday. I spent much of Friday evening going through the details of the bill. I think we had a bunch of folks in the county going through the details of the bill, the bill to double check and triple check my work to ensure that, that my analysis of the impacts to Mojave County was consistent with everybody else's analysis of the impact to Mojave County in coming up with a recommended position for Mojave County on the bill. The bill effectively only protects three basins. And I will just point out that my belief, and I know that Mr. Barelli, Mr. Gould have a lot of experience with this group being down at the Capitol, I, my belief is that it was, it's largely influenced by the Cattle Feeders Association, the Farm and Ranch Group, which, which I think we all know who, who's leader that group is, as well as Ms. Griffin. I think that the Farm Bureau and the Dairyman's Association would be more inclined to address all basins across the state. But this bill specifically only addresses three basins, the Walupi Valley Basin, the Hila Bend Basin, and the Wilcox Basin. The challenge with that is it allows any other basin in the state effectively. I'm sorry?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I was going to pause for a second there. I wanted to ask you a question about, it's the cattleman, is that the guy Bass Aha?
That's correct.
Isn't that the guy that ran smear ads against you and Leo and the board a couple of years ago? I thought so. Okay, continue.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So the, the challenge with only impacting three basins is it effectively leaves Arizona exposed to the challenges that created the Walupi Valley, Valley challenges, exposed to out of state international interests coming in and exploiting the lack of groundwater management. So Saudi interests, UAE interests, out of state California, Minnesota, et cetera, interests coming in and exploiting the lack of groundwater management. Mr. Lingefelter has talked about issues in the Kanab Plateau with groundwater challenges. We've take, we've waited 45 years to address rural groundwater issues. We don't want to wait another 45 years to address issues in the Kanab Plateau. Senate Bill 1520 unfortunately only addresses three basins. That's one issue. The second issue is that there, it only limits conservation effectively. And I say effectively because there's a lot of language in here that suggests that it allows more management than 10%. But it effectively in our basin to 10% because it goes through a whole bunch of criteria that suggests that it could allow conservation to more than 10% in the Walupi Basin, but we will never, ever, ever qualify for anything more than that 10%. And so that means our, right now, our inflow to outflow deficit is 34,000 acre feet per year. That grew 700% between 20, that 2012 and 2021. We would never get better than about 29,000 acre feet. We would never improve better than that because we'd never qualify under the mechanism that they set up here in this bill. The third issue is that they allow 80% of the quote unquote local seats to come from outside of the basin. And Mr. Aha, in theory, I'll just use him as an example since, since Supervisor Lingefelter brought him up, Mr. Aha could serve on every council in the state if he wanted to. They haven't, they did not set up a mechanism that would only allow an individual to serve on one council in the state. So there are a lot of challenges with the bill. That is why my recommendation, I think the recommendation of Ms. Kelly and others, is that on behalf of the county that we oppose 1520 and seek opportunities to work with Mr. Dunn. I have, I will say this, I have tremendous confidence in Mr. Dunn. I think he's a great person. I think he is, he's affable. He is somebody that we can work with. I think he wants to do the right thing and I have tremendous amount of confidence, confidence in Ms. Angus to, to work with him and to work with us to find a solution. So I would encourage our opposition, but an opposition in such a way that we, we pose an opportunity to work with Mr. Dunn through Ms. Angus to find a solution that solves Mojave County's challenges, not only in the Walupi Valley Basin, but prospectively to avoid speculators and exploitation in the future. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Appreciate it. I've also looked at that striker Senate Bill 1520 and we're working very closely with City of Kingman. The City of Kingman thinks that it would be realistic, you know, we were talking about mandated conservation being capped at 10% hypothetically. They think that they could achieve in this valley with our, with our partnership at the county, 10% conservation in the first management period, 10 years, and then maybe up to between 1% and 5% in additional management period. So perhaps up to 25% conservation. And unfortunately, in a lot of the rural basins, if not most of the rural basins, this whole concept of safe yield is just, it's not going to be achievable, I don't think, especially with current technology, but maybe, maybe the private sector will find ways to create additional water. Also the fact that the, the current council members don't have to reside in the basin that's being managed, we think that's a little bit problematic. And then there's just, in my view, reading through it, there's a lot of ambiguities as far as terms and things like this that are, if they're not more defined, are going to turn into litigating words. So I would caveat what you said, Mr. Ponder, that we would oppose, but only oppose in its current form. I have met and had meetings with Senator Dunn, with Senator Angus, with Grant Hanna, and they've all signaled a commitment to work with Mojave County and, and the City of Kingman in getting this to where it needs to be, this language. So with that, I'd open it up to the board if they have any questions for Mr. Ponder.
Supervisor Barelli, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I highly encourage Mr. Ponder to work with our legislative delegation, our both House members and Senator Angus and Senator Dunn. We are rural. My always, my biggest concern is the governor's agenda, the way it has been proposed before, that the governor would actually appoint people to these boards, which we would lose complete control over. They would load it up for, to make sure that they have all the power in the state of Maricopa. They could care less about us out here, folks. If we don't stand strong, we're toast. We won't even drown because there won't be no water because they'll take it all. But I highly encourage Mr. Ponder to work with our, our legislative delegation and work with Senator Dunn. We've worked on several pieces of legislation the last couple of years that could have taken care of things, but obviously we have opposition from the southeast corner of the state who have their complete agenda. And once again, they could care less about northwest Arizona.
Yeah, I want to, I want to build on that if I could, just so that those that are watching understand, Mojave County is, is really the originator of saying, hey, we need to do something. It, it came from conservative Mojave County, Regina Cobb, Sonny Barelli, Leo Biassucci. They were the ones that ran bills for several years, starting in 2017. And, you know, I trust Senator Dunn from, from Yuma. He's got a good heart. He's a good man. I know that he wants to find a solution to this. What, what happens though is we have players that, you know, I would use words I can't use in a public meeting, this Bass Aha and Gail Griffin does not negotiate in good faith. I think that Gail Griffin actually threw Supervisor Barelli under the bus when he was still down there. And like I mentioned before, this guy Bass Aha actually ran ads, smear ads against this Board of Supervisors and our LD30 representatives, which I thought was pretty low, pretty low. So, but we're going to continue to work with our delegation and supervisor, and Senator Dunn.
Mr. Lingefelter?
Yes.
Just, just to the point that Mr. Barelli made, the, the language about the appointment of the board, I actually made, I think, notes in an email to, to, to Mr. Elters and Mr. Lingefelter and to Ms. Kelly. I think that the way that they nominated the board in 1520 is perfectly fine. That's not a challenge. Who's on the board, I think, is problematic. There is some legislative council has noted because of some constitutional issues that, that the governor will, it's because of separation of powers. The governor needs to nominate a majority of any board or commission, but the way that they've done it is that the certain, certain members need to, so the governor, I think it's the President of the Senate names a person, the Speaker of the House names a person, the governor names a person, and then each minority leader gives a list, basically, of three names to give to, to the governor, and then the governor picks from that list. The way that that's done is perfectly fine, I think, a process. So I think we could certainly embrace what Mr. Dunn did with how the board is picked. It's just, we wouldn't want 80% of the members to be from outside the basin. That's not local control at all. So I completely agree with you, Mr. Barelli, and I think that we can, we can work with that.
Well, also, Nick, aside from the fact that all of them or a majority of them could be located from outside of the basin that's being regulated, I have an issue, and I think this board would have an issue of, you know, when you look at the sectors that each one of those board members have to get to, you know, the, the council should be reflective of the regional economy. And I think the way it's written right now is at least two seats go to corporate ag, right? And that might make sense for, for, you know, counties down in southeastern part of the state. But when you look at Mojave County, you know, in this area, shoot, we've got Saudi Arabian international ag, we've got UAE international ag, we've got Central California national ag, tens of thousands of acres, and they're, they're growing pistachios and, and crops that they're doing export agriculture. And that's an entirely different scenario than what's going on in southeastern Arizona. I mean, I don't think anybody here thinks that's a good idea in the Mojave Desert to do export agriculture for foreign countries on fossilized, you know, Ice Age groundwater. It's a horrible idea.
There is an assumption to your point, Mr. Lingefelter, that rural equals agriculture everywhere. And, and to your point, they've tried to wait the local councils to reflect that. And I think that there needs to be sort of a dynamic sense of the council to reflect what that local economy is. To your point, if the local economy is heavily agriculture, maybe they should be, have 40% of the seats. But if it's manufacturing, if it's, you know, transportation, if it's something else, maybe it should not be 40% agriculture. I think that's the conversation we all need to have, but.
Completely different scenario. Completely different scenario. You know, here it plays out, you give the, the international corporate ag folks and the California folks who are here last in this basin, you know, who haven't been here for generations building up this place with small businesses and, and industry, you give them a windfall. And, you know, that's, that's not equitable or that's, I hate that word, it's not fair.
Yep, 100%.
Any other comments? Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm really not keen on an appointed board. You have an elected Board of Supervisors in every county. The only thing that's worth an elected board is an appointed board. You, I think we're the, the elected people are the people that represent the will of the people. You've already made this choice. I don't want the governor to be picking who controls the water in Mojave County. I think that's a bad, bad idea. Need to come up with a better way to do that than, than a, a board. Mr. Ponder spoke about a board. It sounds remarkably similar to the Clean Election Board. It's been a dramatic failure since it was implemented in 2000. That's almost the same way that they picked that board. And we as Republicans get gamed on that deal every, every census. But I don't know why on earth we would want to go into another situation with a board like that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ponder, for your update. We're going to move on.
Thank you.
Item number 27, I believe. Supervisor Gould.
Latasky. Chairman Linginfeltzer, Supervisor Gould, that is correct. We've had a, one of our custodians, a full-time custodian is on extended leave throughout virtually all of FY twenty-five, and the residual cost, uh, for comparable contract support, uh, is, um, um, approaching, uh, the about forty-five thousand dollar level over budget that, that we've been, uh, necessitating to, uh, have the board consider re-appropriating. It's all about just maintaining our level of service, custodial service. That's correct, yes. That's correct. It's a, and hire the replacement if we desire to keep that level of service, which in this case we decided to do. Uh, an employee on workers' comp, uh, still holds that position.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. For that motion, second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per to have it, you have it, so ordered. Item number thirty-two, Supervisor Gould.
So I was looking at the, the backup on this, and I essentially have no backup. I get a name and I get an order from the judge, but I don't have any information on this person that I'm going to appoint. Um, and actually, I'd just like to continue this to the next, uh, meeting so I can get some information on this person. The legislature put us in this, in the way that these things are done so that we'll actually take a look at it, and if I don't have any backup, I can't really take a look at it.
You have, uh, Presiding Judge Moss signaling. Do you want to come up to the podium?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, County Manager Elters, thank you for the opportunity. Um, Supervisor Gould, if the backup wasn't provided, that's an oversight, and I have no problem pushing it back to the next meeting. Um, I will say Stephanie Hammond, um, was a late add. She was approved to be a pro tem years ago, but since she was a clerk at the Justice Court, I didn't feel comfortable, um, doing that, so we pushed her off. She's no longer working for the Justice Court, even though she serves as a small claims judge and as a mediator for the Justice Court. Um, but if we can get a resume in for her, that's not a problem.
Supervisor, Supervisor Gould.
A motion to continue this to the next meeting.
For that motion, second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per to have it, you have it, so ordered. Item number thirty-eight, or excuse me, thirty-seven, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought this was, this apparently is a reconsideration, and I thought it was odd that a reconsideration was on the consent agenda. So I pulled this off of the consent agenda so that we can have a vote on reconsideration.
All right, so, um, this is approved, the reconsideration of the adoption of BOS Resolution Number twenty-two four dash one zero five, a rezone for Assessor's Parcel Number three three zero dash three two dash zero zero two, zero one eight, zero two zero, and zero two one, from an AR agricultural residential and AR eight, uh, ten A to a RE one A residential recreation, one acre minimum lot size zone, to allow for a residential subdivision in the Kingman vicinity, Mojave County. Commission recommended approval by five to two vote. The commission added conditions of approval of no more than one hundred and fifty residents, residential lots, and the rock outcropping on the site shall be preserved in perpetuity, which was denied by the Board of Supervisors on December second, twenty twenty-four, item number forty-two. Um, we need a, a roll call vote for this. We can, fine.
You, you do not need a roll call vote, you just need a vote.
Okay. Supervisor Lattes.
I have a question. Was this the item that went down on a two to two tie vote?
Correct.
I'll go ahead and move for approval of item thirty-seven as read.
Okay, thank you. We've heard that motion. Do we have a second? For that motion, second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Here to have it, you have it, so ordered. B, if reconsideration is granted, approve setting a public hearing for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, for the adoption of BOS Resolution Number twenty-two four dash one zero five, a rezone for Assessor's Parcel Number three three zero dash three two dash zero zero two, zero one eight, zero two zero, and zero two one, from an AR and AR ten A to a RE one A zone, to allow for a residential subdivision in the Kingman vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. That a motion? Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Here to have it, you have it, so ordered. Thank you. Item number thirty-eight, approve setting up stanchions and ropes around the dais during the Board of Supervisors meeting. Supervisor Gould.
I pull that, okay. Uh, I thought this, we should have a discussion on this rather than, uh, have it be lumped in with the consent agenda.
Got it. We also have three members, uh, the public that have signed up to speak. I'm going to go ahead and, we'll get through them, and then we'll get into discussion. Uh, first up is, uh, Mr. Scotty McQuirr.
Um, is that, you're going to put the ropes up again like you did in COVID? I guess. Uh, Bullhead's done that too. They're too much of a bunch of damn cowards that were going to run up there and kick your ass or something. I don't know. He's sitting over here with a gun. What do you, what, what the heck? Nobody's ever threatened you guys. I've never heard a yell at you, but you deserve that. And, uh, I just, you got the rules of order coming up too, and what a, oh. Yeah, I did sign up for that one too. Uh, I just don't get it. What, what are you afraid of? We, how am I supposed to go up here and ask for number thirty-eight to get polled? I can't go in my supervisor's office down there in Bullhead because I don't like that I don't do gay people. Not going to. I've been affected by them since I was eleven years old. You can go to hell.
All right. Jeff Esposito. Jennifer Esposito, you're on deck.
Jeff Esposito, Kingman, Arizona. Sonny, you need to move your mic closer to your body. That would be helpful.
The Plexiglas Instanchion and Ropes Assembly that separated the public from Mojave County officials during Board of Supervisors meetings through the COVID period were removed by Chairman Ron Gould's order four years ago. New board member, Don Martin, wants the theater-style ribbon barrier put back in place for purpose of public safety.
This comes from, you know, my law enforcement background, and like I say, sitting down there for a couple of years, I've seen a couple of times that I felt that the person at the podium was just about ready to charge, and the, the people sitting up there are literally sitting ducks.
Martin is asking fellow supervisors during next week's board meeting for their support in bringing back the stanchion and ribbons to protect those sitting at the dais.
Well, I think that it's a matter of safety, uh, and that, you know, I, I just, I can't in good faith to say everybody should have free and unfettered access to that program.
The Board of Supervisors will be meeting next Sunday.
All right. So that's pretty embarrassing for this county. Um, Don, don't be the scarecrow and don't be the, the lion.
We give the screen up, please. Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. To the stupid visor from District Four, I have a legitimate question. Are you insane? I mean, honestly, uh, first of all, this shouldn't have been on the consent agenda, so thank you Supervisor Gould for pulling this, but it's a serious question whether you're mentally stable to even be calling for this. And I would like to state for the record that constituents have more to fear from, from the stupid visor doddering Don from District Four than you, the board, does from the constituents. And to wit, I would like to read the open threat that he made to my husband on Facebook, which I put on the screen. I will paraphrase in the interest, interest of time. Jeff Esposito, you are the most despicable, low-life piece of crap on the face of this earth. I'm a nonviolent person by nature, and it really takes a lot to get me upset to the point where I can honestly say, if you had the quote, stones to say that to my face in public, the end result would not be good. I'm sure you get the drift of what I'm saying. You get to reap what you sow, you lousy piece of crap. During the campaign, Martin accosted me in the lobby in an unhinged rant, yelling and screaming at me-
I'm going to call her.
-and threatening me.
Bring it back to the item.
Okay. So, here's the reality. You have armed security. I'm willing to bet that at least half of the county employees conceal carry. I'm willing to bet that at least half of the audience concealed carries. I do. I've been coming to these meetings for about nine years. I watched them multiple times when I lived in La Paz County on the TV district. I have never once seen anyone approach this podium who appeared ready to lunge or jump. We often approach the dais here to, um, hand documents to the clerk that we want entered into the record. We often will approach the dais before the meeting or during lunch breaks before reconvening to, uh, make comments to our supervisor or other supervisors regarding items that have not yet come up to the agenda, or to make suggestions. It's one of the few times that we can speak face to face without a ridiculous drive to supervisors who are not in our district. But it is absolutely absurd, and no mentally sound person would think that putting up a little ribbon tape would protect you because I'm looking at five people who look perfectly capable of protecting themselves, including the ex-law enforcement officer who kills animals for sport as a hobby and talks about being a Second Amendment guy.
Supervisor Martin, this is your item. Would you like to speak on it?
Oh, yes, I would. Thank you. For the past two and a half years, I've been sitting in this auditorium while attending the meetings of the Board of Supervisors. During the time, I have on occasion seen members of the public address individuals on the board in a very aggressive manner, to the point where I felt that these persons were on the verge of leaving the podium and charging the dais where the supervisors or members of the staff were seated. It would only take three seconds for an enraged and out of control person to reach the supervisors or staff from that podium. It would take a minimum of fifteen to twenty seconds for security that is in a back of the auditorium to reach the front of the auditorium. Mojave County is a Second Amendment sanctuary county, and I want it to stay that way. We currently have no metal detectors in the auditorium, and again, I have no desire to change that situation. In the past, I have been seated by those who were armed with firearms in the auditorium. I was not, nor am I afraid. I have served in the U.S. Army, and as a police officer in my life, I have dealt with deadly situations in both of those positions in the past, and I have no qualms about dealing with them if necessary while serving on this Board of Supervisors. I am also aware that in the past, members of the Board of Supervi, Board of Supervisors were armed, as is their right. It is not only for their protection, but for the protection of the others on the Board of Staff, Board or staff that are not armed. By placing a barrier in front of the dais, between the podium and the dais, it would increase the time that a supervisor would have to defend themselves or staff from three seconds to approximately six seconds, time enough for that supervisor to defend him or herself or an unarmed member of staff. That is all I'm asking. An unobtrusive barrier placed up front to give the supervisor the time to defend themselves or staff should an attack occur from a deranged armed person. I'm not suggesting that this situation will occur. I truly hope that it never will. However, taking the steps to prevent or mitigate what may happen is the right thing to do by this board. My proposal today violates no one's rights, nor does it restrict anyone's right to address the Board of Supervisors or staff. It merely puts in place a layer of safety that is warranted. With that, I would make a motion.
All right, you've heard that motion. I have a second. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't think that a, a strip of plastic nor a velvet rope is going to protect us from anybody that decided to charge the dais in reality. Um, I was here when we had, when we had those up. I took them down when I was chairman. Um, it, it's not going to accomplish anything safe. If you want to be safe, we have to put up a bulletproof barricade, and I just don't want to sit behind a bulletproof barricade. Um, I walk in through the front door, and I walk out through the front door, and when it reaches the point that I can't walk in through the front door and out through the, the front door, I'm going to find something else to do. Because it either means one of two things, is I've forgotten why the people put me here, or the situation has become so egregious in the public that it's no longer safe to serve. Uh, but a velvet rope or a, or a retractable strap's not going to do a darn bit of good. So if you decide to do this, I may have to take action myself and make a gap in that so that my constituents can walk up and address. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Martin.
I would add, uh, Supervisor Gould, I believe you are one of the ones that is currently armed on this board. Is that correct?
That's, that's the beauty about concealed carry.
Yes, it is.
Nobody ever knows.
Yes, it is. But that doesn't negate the fact you are carrying. You are allowed to conceal carry, and why is that? If you're not afraid, or you're not concerned that anybody could walk in this auditorium and do you harm or anybody up here harm, why would you need to carry? Why would you need to carry? So what I'm saying is, you're carrying, I have a right to carry, and if somebody comes off that podium and tries to get to me or any person on this board, I'm going to have the time to defend myself and anybody on this board, and I maintain that as a Second Amendment supporter.
We, we have a motion. Um, I'm sorry, Supervisor- Do we have any discussion? Borelli, yes. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Supervisor Martin, I understand your intent. You're trying to slow and to buy time. Uh, I understand that, your intent. Uh, I understand that, your intent thoroughly. And I think there's other remedies that we can have by having actually have security staff closer to the dais. My biggest concern is, and I'm sure it is with all of you, I'm sure you have too, when you're shooting, it's the background. And what he's trying to do here is to prevent anybody from rushing because if they're armed and they're shooting this way, shots are going to go that way. And that endangers everybody in the room, not just the perpetrator. So I understand and respect your intent on this. We've got to come up with another solution to, to address this issue. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a substitute motion if it's possible.
Let's, um, see if we get a second on Supervisor Martin's original motion first. We have a second to the original motion. Hearing none. Motion dies for lack of a second. Supervisor Borelli.
Thank you.
Order, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that staff come up with a system or an options to be able to mitigate any kind of threat or counter threat, uh, to also protect the citizens that are in the audience. If they can come up with some type of a plan that we can be able to satisfy this issue.
You've heard that motion. We have a second. Item dies for lack of a second. With that, I think we'll move on to item number forty-two on the regular agenda. Uh, we do have three people signed up to speak, first being Scotty McElroy.
Scotty from Bullhead. And, um, this was from the, the February third meeting. I think you heard me before that this was approved by somebody else a long time ago or whatever. Uh, why this guy gets a thirty, thirty-five hundred dollar, whatever, he's getting a discount. He shouldn't get one, uh, because that's going to have all the other people. Depai's auctioneer is why I'm bitching about is that he rents the place between twelve and fifteen, eighteen times a year. Why shouldn't he, after ten meetings, maybe he should get a freebie? You know, like to get a free sandwich at Subway, whatever. When's this going to stop? Because I'm a nonprofit or for-profit? Why should any, this guy puts on a lot of things like balloon shows and you know, Sonny, he does, he's big time. now they changed the rules again down there at the fairgrounds. You can no longer, Depai's can no longer back their trailer in there because they're afraid they're going to damage the frigging cement floor. They have to unload by hand over one hundred chairs, about twenty or thirty tables that they set up there, all the furniture. They filled that place up in there. And now he, you sign up and you go in there and you get your bid ticket and all that and you pay the guy in the window. He's got to have it outside now. He's got to strip all his computer stuff, take it inside and set it up on a table, then take it back out. Now he's making, what you've done is made his expenses go up big time. You haul a hundred chairs, twenty to thirty of those eight-foot bore, uh, tables, plus all the furniture that goes in. And we're talking some nice antique stuff sometimes that can get, you know, banged up. Uh, maybe you can make an exemption for the, not anybody that's going to load furniture up, can drive in there. They have to use a dolly to get it out that they bought it, it's theirs. But you should let Depai have. Who in heck, you got to quit making rules up as they go unless it's approved by you. This item should have been brought to you that they changed this. And, uh, I just don't think anybody should get a discount. if you're going to give discounts, I'm going to start renting this place myself.
Frank Wills. Jennifer Esposito, you're on deck.
Morning Chair and Board of Supervisors. Here again, um, like I said last time, I was not aware of the curtains cost. I signed the application in, uh, May of, uh, twenty twenty-four, and I have, uh, never had to, uh, pay for the curtains. I've never been asked to pay for the curtains, and it was never on the application and was told to, uh, pay for curtains. And it's always been that way since I've, uh, worked with the, uh, county. Um, even during the Christmas show, I was out of the country for a few weeks, and when we came back, uh, the staff knew that we had to set up the curtains. My staff went in there and set up the curtains. They've never told me anything about that then. I didn't find out about this until, uh, in, uh, January or the end of December, I think it was, you know? So I was not aware of any of this at any time. So, um, cost-wise is, um, very, uh, costly for me to pay that kind of money, um, since I've, uh, already planned this, uh, event way, way in advance. Um, the other thing is maybe you take in consideration for the future, you know, um, when you do show, sometimes you don't use all the curtains in certain buildings. So basically, uh, you, maybe you'll use, um, ten, fifteen curtains in one building, but you got to pay the full fee. And then another building, um, you use, uh, maybe all of them, you know, to fill up the whole building, and then the other building, maybe you use part of them. So basically you're paying for, if you use one curtain or ten curtains or fifteen curtains in one building, you know, you pay the full fee. That's something maybe for the future, but in this, um, instance, uh, I was never aware of any cost for the curtains, and, uh, people make statements. I make a ton of money. Nobody in this building knows what kind of money I make, uh, whether I'm profitable on this particular event or not. Um, I look at all my events, you know? Um, I'm an event coordinator, you know, in Mojave County, and I do do quite a bit, bit events, and, uh, I do take a loss on some events and some I make money, but I just justify, uh, the whole, the whole program at the end of the year, just like anyone else, you know? It's part of, uh, business. But the, uh, Home and Garden Show, um, is going to go on regardless, um, because I've made contracts with everybody at that fairgrounds, uh, for my vendors, and I will not let that go. And, um, I'm hoping this, uh, curtain, uh, thing will, um, be waived, uh, because I was not aware of this in any shape or form. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. The Board of Supervisors sets the fees for the fairgrounds. Board of Supervisors approved the fees for the fairgrounds. Staff said at the last meeting that Desert Canyon Events was informed about this particular fee. Whether or not this fee is appropriate or absurd is really sort of irrelevant. If you start carving out exceptions for one vendor, you have to exempt everyone or exempt no one. Uh, at the last meeting, I believe it was disclosed that another vendor had already paid this fee. So if you're going to give this guy a discount, you have to refund the fees collected from every other vendor for the rest of the year. Otherwise, you open up the county to potential litigation for unequal treatment under the law, et cetera, et cetera. So if the board would like to come back at a future date and reexamine the fairground fees, that's a fair thing to do. Then staff can justify whether this particular fee is, you know, justified or whether or not it needs to be modified or amended or removed completely, but on this particular date, the fee is the fee. Either this county is engaged in crony corporatism or this county treats everybody equally. That's up to you guys. Good luck.
That's the last individual we had sign up to speak. Put it up to the board. Supervisor Latman.
So Attorney Espeland, I think we continued this item so that you could take a look at some of the details behind this item. Could I ask you, when was the actual fee schedule put into effect?
Uh, yes, uh, Chairman Lingfelter, Supervisor Latman, Board of Supervisors, uh, on January second, twenty twenty-four, the board held a public hearing. At that public hearing, uh, the board adopted the fee schedule. So the fee schedule that is currently in place was adopted, well, the, the, the fee in, that we're talking about, the one that he's talking about by the curtains, was January second of twenty twenty-four.
And what was the date he signed the paperwork for this particular event?
The application was submitted in, excuse me, May of twenty twenty-four, so it was after the board had already adopted it. The exact date that he submitted his application was May, May thirteenth of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to disapprove this item, not to grant the variant, the exception.
For that motion, do I have a second? For that motion, a second. I ask all, uh, any additional discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it? So order. Item number forty-three is, we do have, uh, two people sign up to speak, and then I'll call you up, Aaron, if that's okay. Um, Lynn, uh, Cananian? Sorry if I mispronounce your name. If you could, uh, state your name and address for the record when you come up.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Canianen, three four seven two Montmorel Street, Kingman, Arizona. Um, I have spoken to the board before, Mr. Chairman Lingfelter and Supervisor Gould, Mr. Elters. I hope you remember me. I am the president and the founder of Friends of Mojave County Animal Shelter. I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself to the rest of the, uh, Board of Supervisors, just to let you know what we are about. Uh, we are, we found, we were formed in, um, two thousand nineteen under the suggestion of then's, um, county manager, Mr. Mike Hendricks and Director of Administrative Services, um, Yvonne Orr. Um, what we do is we just help the shelter animals and the shelter employees any way we can, um, with fundraising. We are a five-member board. We have Kathy DeGiulio as treasurer, Darla Wright, Doctor of Veterinary Medicine, uh, as a, um, director, Dan Hernan, the, um, PetSmart manager here in Kingman as a director, and Carrie Mooneyham, a professional photographer as a director. Uh, we also help, um, coordinate, um, we've got fifty, over fifty active volunteers under the direction of Susan Armstrong, our volunteer coordinator. We help at adoption events at PetSmart and other community events. Uh, we work as adoption counselors, um, to help so, uh, maybe eliminate some returned animals. We walk socialized dogs, do laundry, dishes, clean up and bathe, um, animals, get them ready for adoption. Um, we also coordinate with foster families. Right now, we have, um, litters of, um, puppies in foster homes ranging in size of two to a litter to ten to a litter. We subsidize adoption fees, which helps get, um, older, maybe harder to adopt bigger animals into their forever homes. Um, last year in two thousand twenty-four, we subsidized over fifty-eight thousand dollars helping, and those checks get written out to Mojave County Animal Shelter, um, resulting in more than six hundred animals finding placement. I am here today to speak, I just wanted to give you a little background. I'm here today, um, to speak in favor of the, um, Administrative Services Director and the county, um, Mojave County Animal Shelter Manager in favor of them going to the conference at, for Best Friends. Um, Best Friends Animal Rescue is probably the third most recognized, um, animal rescue in the country, right behind Humane Society of United States and the ASPCA. They have a rescue in Canav, Utah, that, um, is open for visits and volunteering.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up, but thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you, Chairman and Board, and thank you for, um, taking another look at this. Best Friends Animal Society is and always will be a religious cult. All you have to do is go to Wikipedia, which we all know is like a pretty lame source of not digging too deeply into a lot of things, but even Wikipedia acknowledges that, you know, after what was called the schism, the, uh, the church, the Process Church of the Final Judgment's members retained their allegiance to Mary Ann McLean, she renamed the church as the Foundation Church of the Millennium, which in nineteen seventy-seven became the Foundation Faith of the Millennium, and in nineteen eighty, the Foundation Faith of God. Followers generally, generally refer to it simply as the Foundation. All right? Now, um, you've got to be a pretty bad cult to be denounced by both Scientology and the Church of Satan, but the Process Church of the Final Judgment was. Now, this was common knowledge amongst a lot of people in the dog rescue community, as well as a lot of people in the dog show, uh, thing. And, uh, when this first, uh, became well documented around, I don't know, two thousand or something, I did a very deep dive on this. I even reached out to a former Process, uh, Church of the Final Judgment cult member who confirmed that absolutely everything was true and then some. Um, if you had taken the time to look into this yourself, then you would know on the Process Church of the Final Judgment Wikipedia page, the entire sordid history of this cult. Everywhere they went, um, horrific crimes happened. In their incarnation as the Four Pi, a man was arrested with fingers in his pocket because he was a cannibal, and he said, no, I'm a, I'm a member of the Four Pi. And that was the same thing as Best Friends Animal Society. If you go to their website, it's easy to find that original founding members of this cult are still serving on the board and controlling this. They release, I, they lease, I think, thirty-three thousand acres from the Bureau of Land Management. The very public face of this cult has been very much cleaned up over the last two decades. They worked very hard to scrub the actual facts off their website, off the internet. And although they acknowledged, yeah, we had some hippie trippy days back and, you know, it's okay. They threatened the person who, the editor who exposed this online with a lawsuit, and she said, prove it's wrong and I'll take it down, and they couldn't, and they backed down. Here's the thing, I've been in the rescue thing a long time. I've been in the dog thing over thirty years. If you want to get a grant and send staff to Nathan Winograd's No Kill Now Movement Seminar or whatever he puts on, they are a wonderful organization that I have supported for decades. But do not send county staff, grant funded or not, to a religious cult extravaganza who has questionable shelter practices. One of my friends had to take dogs from Best Friends after they were unable to fundraise further off of them. Those were the Michael Vick dogs. They're a scam and a lobbying organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Aaron, I'm going to call you up. Um, I'm going to read it into the record, though. Discussion, possible action regarding accepting the funds from the Best Friends Network grant in the amount of three thousand two hundred and ten dollars, which covers the out-of-county travel for the Administrative Services Director and Shelter Manager to attend the Best Friends National Conference held on February twentieth to the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at the invite of Best Friends Animal Society and deposit the funds into the Animal Shelter General Fund and travel. Aaron?
Good morning. Um, I did generate a summary of the Best Friends Animal findings after the last board meeting that we had. I put together a memo along with backup, and it was sent about two days after the last board meeting. It was sent over to the county manager, and then he passed it along to all of the Board of Supervisors. I'm happy to either summarize those findings or if we have any questions from the board.
Would you summarize them, please?
Sure. Um, so basically in summary, this was to provide some verification to the organization. This included a charity navigator assessment for Best Friends, uh, the Best Friends National Conference information and session information. I also provided a statement from Best Friends, their tax information for their 501(c)(3). And just to give a bit more background on the charity navigator, um, there's areas in which they're assessed on their score. They received one of the highest scores in twenty twenty-three, and this was based on areas of and this was based on areas of accountability and finance, impact and measurement, leadership and adaptability, and culture and community. As Lynn touched on, they are one of the top three organizations for animal rescue and animal welfare in the U.S. I also put into my memo just an FYI to the new board members. The Shelter Manager had requested out-of-county travel for the conference last July. It was approved by this board. She did provide a summary of her findings and her experience in the report to the taxpayers, in which she did receive positive feedback from the board. And that kind of in a nutshell is the summary of what I provided to this board.
Okay, great. Thank you. I open it up to the board for discussion. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aaron, when we did a Google search, we found a connection between the terrorist group Animal Liberation Front and this, the group that's offering the, the grant. Did you guys run across that?
I didn't. I mean, when I do a broad Google search, certainly I can find a number of accusations on a number of organizations. I even looked at the Wikipedia page, and again, there may have been association with an organization that started this branching off from a Scientology church. However, in my summary from Best Friends, as well as representatives from the organization, they have stated that since their, quote, inception for their Canav rescue in the mid-1980s, they have no affiliation with this. So there's nothing more to substantiate other than to keep trying to find information that may or may not be true.
So you didn't run across the connection on the internet between Animal Liberation Front and Best Friends?
I didn't notice anything. I was doing a deep dive of words that came up the last meeting. So I didn't look for any other accusations, but I am going off of the word of what they've said, what Charity Navigator has said. Actually, two representatives from Best Friends have commented. That was the information I was going off of.
So to check them out, we just asked them about it?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other supervisors comment? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. For that motion, a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
No.
I appear to have it. You have it, so ordered. Item number 44, discussion and possible action. Receive a presentation from the Chief Financial Officer on zero-based budgeting and direct staff to take appropriate action, if any, based up, based upon the principles discussed during the presentation. Director Mornian?
Thank you, Chairman Lingefelter and Board members. Give me a second while I get this presentation up. Thank you. So this, the topic of zero-based budgeting came up at the first board meeting in January. And since there is a lot of a lot of varying interpretations of what zero-based budgeting is, I thought it would be best to, to start with the zero-based budgeting theory and kind of run the board through what zero-based budgeting is in theory. So the, basically the textbook definition and idea of zero-based budgeting, as well as what it actually looks like in practice, based on some research that the Government Finance Officers Association has done. I know we have at least one board member who's very familiar with zero-based budgeting, but I wanted to get everybody on the same page before we discuss any potential actions. So just, just a note before I get into the presentation. Some assumptions that, that I was bearing in mind as I put this presentation together is that, based on the feedback from the board, we are looking at zero-based budgeting. The board wanted to look at zero-based budgeting basically as a means of reducing the county's expenditures and efficiently delivering the services that we provide. I will just make one statement that there are some inherent, inherent challenges because government services, especially general-funded government services, by their nature, a lot of them, we do not have a choice in whether or not we provide them. They're mandated services. We're required by law to provide them. I'd just give two examples. Our detention facilities, both on the adult and juvenile side. The county has no choice. We have to provide those services. Similarly, the, you know, we have to provide food to the inmates there. We have to provide health services to the inmates that reside in those detention centers. And then also, we are mandated to provide illegal defense. So our legal defense departments, by and large, the county doesn't have any choice in whether or not to provide those services. So in theory, zero-based budgeting, you basically start from zero each year, as the name implies. The, the difference here from traditional, what we call incremental budgeting, is that you don't look at last year's budget at all. You start fresh every single year. There's no, no looking back at what, what was spent or budgeted in the prior year. You're just starting, starting afresh each year. In theory, that means that every single budget line item should be thoroughly examined. A lot of work will go into looking at what, what the inputs are versus what the outputs are. So basically, what are, what resources are we providing versus what is the product that we're getting at the end of that? There's also a lot of focus put on prioritizing which tasks or goals the county or the board would want to provide, and then the funding allocations are derived out of that. So how does zero-based budgeting work? If you look at the, the two bullet points on the left side of this slide, you basically have a deep dive analysis before the budget is even put together. Like I said, you're looking at the inputs that are going in versus what is the, what is the service that is coming out on the other end? You take an organization and you look at the lowest level that budget decisions are made at, and that is called the decision unit. Each decision unit is asked to do that deep dive analysis and then provide multiple, what they call, decision packages, which are basically, each one would be a different funding level for the service that that decision unit provides. So you have multiple decision packages for each funding, for each decision unit. Ideally, there's at least three decision packages for each decision unit. As I mentioned before, what was done in the past, the spending patterns in the past, what was budgeted in the, in some, or prior years, is not taken into consideration. So when I talk about at least three decision packages, you're going to have what would be described as a base package, that would be the first one. And there could be multiple base packages, each exploring different ways to deliver the services. You would have the current service package, and that would basically be status quo. That would be, again, not looking at what was spent last year, but generally speaking, in practice, you're going to have an organization and that, that status quo decision package is going to look very similar to what was budgeted or spent in the prior year. And again, there could be multiple decision packages at that same level of resources, the difference being in looking at different ways to deliver those services. And then lastly, you would have what would be considered an enhanced package or packages. And this would be really like your Cadillac level of service delivery. You heard the courts give a presentation at the last board meeting. That is what I would describe as an enhanced package. That was, if you had all the resources you need, what would that look like? And so that would be delivering the services at the highest and best level. And again, similarly to the base level and the current level, you could have multiple decision packages at that level. And so each one of those decision packages, when, when you look at it, think of each decision package basically as a separate departmental budget, because that, that really is what, what they are. If you have a department that is mandated to, mandated or not mandated, it doesn't really matter. But if you have a department that provides certain services, you're going to get several different department-level budgets from that department, each describing a different way to deliver those services based on a different number of resources being provided to that department. And the decision packages, once they're all submitted, are then ranked from lowest to highest for priority. And that ranking can happen either at the decision unit level, or if you have a larger department that has multiple decision units in it, maybe the department director ranks those decision packages prior to submitting those to the county manager and chief financial officer. The, the big thing here is just realizing that if you have a department that is submitting multiple decision packages for those three levels, you know, you could have a department that's delivered, that's submitting five, six, seven, or more decision packages. And so there's, there's a substantial amount of documentation that gets generated, and there's a substantial amount of time and, and cost associated with generating all of that documentation. Another way that this can be done is that the decision packages could be gathered and ranked on an organization-wide basis. This is less often done in practice because it's generally the department directors or those that are managing a decision unit within a department that have the, the best idea of how those services are delivered, what that, what that looks like at, at a detailed level. And it's usually easier for them to rank decision package options than for somebody, either an elected board member that maybe is not as familiar with the day-to-day details of that department, or the county manager, or myself. And then after the packages are ranked, then that ranking is used. In the county's case, it would be the county manager, Elters, and myself that would look at those rankings and determine ultimately, what decision packages do we want to present to the board as the recommended budget? So just real quickly, I'm going to run through some pros and cons, advantages and disadvantages of zero-based budgeting. We'll start with the advantages. It's generally considered a rational and comprehensive method for reducing budget. I say rational because it's looking at the cost to deliver different services based on the value that they provide. So rational basis there, and then it's comprehensive because you're really looking at all of the spending. Everything gets looked at. It, it can be considered a more efficient allocation of resources because you're really basing how those resources are allocated based on needs and priorities that have been predetermined either by the department or by an elected board. I will say that the research that, that I did shows that the largest gains that are delivered by zero-based budgeting generally don't come as a matter of strict dollar savings in a budget. A lot of times, it can be that you get a greater value or benefit from the way that services are delivered. You find efficiencies, whether that is eliminating redundancies, finding a different way to deliver services, potentially outsourcing certain services. Those generally are what generates the largest gains with zero-based budgeting. And then again, just as I mentioned before, it's important that we remember that a lot of the government-provided services are mandated. And so it's not a question of whether or not we want to provide them, we have to provide them. The only question or wiggle room would be in how those services are provided, or what level those services are provided. The, the last thing there is that when you're talking about priorities, you could have the general community that doesn't think a certain service is a priority. You could have an elected board that doesn't think it's a certain priority, but if it's mandated, we still have to provide it. So just something to keep in mind. On the other side, disadvantages of zero-based budgeting. It, it is a substantial time commitment from staff. It takes a lot of resources to go into that. Our annual budget process now starts in, at the beginning of October. That's when we sit down with the internal service departments. Last week was our first week of meetings. County Manager Elters and I sitting with each department and going over the budgets that they have submitted. We have more meetings this week and next week. So it is an extensive process that we currently have in place. This would add another level on top of that because the amount of time that departments will be spending to assemble not just one budget, but multiple budgets would be considerable. There also tends to be a reluctance of managers to suggest decision packages below their current levels. Shocking, right? And there's also, research has shown that there, there can be a lack of buy-in and it basically leads to gaming, gaming the system or gaming the budget process. And what I mean by that is you could have, within a company or an organization that's asked to do, to make decision packages, right? You could get decision packages where, you know, the, the managers of those decision units might give low rankings to services that they know have very high appeal to the public or to leadership within the organization. And so they would give them a very low ranking on their priority list, knowing full well that the leadership is not going to cut those services. I would, I would, you know, if we're looking at the county, I would use an example, something like senior services. Those are not mandated services. We, we classify those as essential services, but we're not required by law to provide them. I'm not suggesting that public health would do anything of the sort, but that is, that is one service or, or list of services that the county provides that, that could be used in that, in that way. Another thing is that the decision packages can often be driven by management preferences rather than board preferences, because by the time that that recommended budget or those decision packages get to the actual elected board, a lot of things have happened already at that point. The board is really coming in towards the end of the process. And so it, it would really depend on the level of involvement of the board when you're implementing zero-based budgeting. And then lastly, as I said, the, the amount of time that goes into developing multiple decision packages, basically multiple department budgets, can be extensive. And because you're asking department with the same level of resources that they have at their disposal to create one budget, you're now asking them to create at least three budgets. A lot of times, what you end up getting is they're so focused on developing multiple budgets that they neglect to look at, hey, is there a different way that we can deliver this service? So they're neglecting to look at those alternative service delivery options. And like I said, that is what research has shown, is where the biggest gains are often found. But if you have staff that are so overloaded with just putting the numbers together, they tend to fall short on that aspect of it. I will say that when we're looking at theoretical zero-based budgeting, within the county's organizational structure, we have funds, and we have orgs, and then we have accounts within the orgs. The org would be the, basically the level that you would want a decision package created at because, especially when we're thinking about things like grants, those have to be separated into their own org for accounting purposes. And so it's very difficult to say, hey, we're going to look at a department that has 30 or 40 different orgs for some departments, larger departments. And so you would basically be asking them to create multiple decision packages for each one of those budget orgs within their department. So in practice, what does zero-based budgeting actually look, look like? As I mentioned, Government Finance Officers Association did conduct an extensive survey. It is a bit dated, but it was the most recent wide-scale survey, the, the results of which are currently publicly available. They surveyed 413 government entities. Out of those entities, about 20% responded, yes, we use zero-based budgeting. But then with the follow-up questions, it was found that only one out of 413 actually used textbook zero-based budgeting as, you know, as the theory. used textbook zero-based budgeting as, you know, as the theory states that it, that it should operate and, and how it would be implemented. More common was entities calling it zero-based budgeting, but where they really were only using one element or two elements of zero-based budgeting. They basically a hybrid approach, and then still calling it zero-based budgeting because they know that there was kind of, you know, it was a, it was a nice term that had some broad appeal, and so we're going to call it zero-based budgeting, even though it's really only this much zero-based budgeting and this much what we've always done type of budgeting. As I said, there were some hybrid approaches, couple popular alternatives, zero line item budgeting, which is basically focused on answering the question of are the inputs reasonable given the expected output? And so that's looking at each line item and having the department justify every penny that they're budgeting in that line item, but without the deep dive front-end analysis that zero-based budgeting calls for. So it's basically skipping what some would consider the most important part of zero-based budgeting, and instead focusing solely on the numbers and saying, hey, if we're asking, if we spent $5,000 or $10,000 last year and we're asking for $15,000 this year, here's our justification of why we need that amount for the current year's budget. The other alternative is service-level budgeting. This one, you get decision packages, again, similar to zero-based budgeting, but the focus is more, again, on how are we delivering the service and at what level, without that focus on the, the detail of the inputs that are going into that. Real quickly, I just want to remind the board, since we do have several new board members, the current Mojave budget, Mojave County budget process, we do provide departments with prior year data, but we also provide them a five-year average and ask that they consider that their baseline expense. We know costs have been increasing over the last five years, so typically that five-year average is going to be less than what was budgeted last year. And when county manager Elters and I sit down with each one of the departments and go through their budgets, that discussion is at a line item level. We do look at those discrete expenses per line item, whether it's personnel, whether it's supplies, whether it's, you know, any outside services that a department is using. And we, you know, if there's a budget request that is exceeding that baseline expense, that five-year average, we do ask for justification. That drives a lot of the conversations that we have with each one of the departments. And so I would, I would say that we fall into the category of, of kind of using a hybrid model because some elements of our budget process do look very similar to zero-based budgeting. Not spot-on with the theory, but more in line with what we actually see in practice around the country. We do use, we call them funding packages, not decision packages, but anytime a department has a budget initiative where they're asking for something that, that maybe is, is a little bit different, whether that is an additional FTE, whether that is money for a non-recurring type capital request, they put those into a funding package. And when the county manager and I sit down with these departments, we discuss all those requests, but we basically put them aside into a parking lot until we get through meeting with all the departments, see where we're falling out at the bottom line, and then consider each one of those funding packages based on the justification that is provided, based on the need of the department, whether or not that will actually make it into what gets recommended to the board as a proposed county budget. There's some exceptions to that. If, if a request is truly budget neutral, where, you know, a department has said, hey, we've identified a need for this particular item or this particular expense, and we think that that need is so great that, and it's such a high priority for us that we have figured out a way to reduce costs somewhere else in our budget, so basically they balance out, those may get included right on, right on, right up front, rather than getting set aside in that parking lot. Another, another scenario where that could happen is, is if there's been an expansion of mandated services. As we know, the legislature often pushes, passes legislation that pushes additional costs down to the county or requires the county to provide a new or higher level of service. Like I said, sometimes we don't have a choice. And so if there is clearly a, a new mandate from higher up, from the state or the federal government, that we have to provide something, then we will budget for that accordingly to make sure that we are compliant with whatever that new law may be. And then lastly, I just want to run through real quickly a couple of measures that we've taken the last couple of years to reduce expense. As I said, we have put into place that five-year average as a baseline, so the departments really have to provide a little bit more justification. We revamped how we budget for personnel. Personnel is the general fund's largest expense by far, and we put some measures into place last year that cut about $2 million out of the personnel portion of the budget. Three things in particular, we standardized how we're budgeting for vacant positions, where in previous years, whatever the previous incumbent for that position was being paid, that's what stayed in the budget, even if they'd been an employee with the county for 20 or 30 years and they were topped out on their salary range, that stayed in there. We pulled all of that back, said, hey, if, if they're an hourly position, we're going to budget them at step four within their given salary range. If they're salaried, we're going to budget them at step eight within the given salary range. That is standardized across the entire county. Similarly, a filled position cannot be over-budgeted or over-funded. We had a lot of instances, maybe where, again, you had somebody that had been with the county a very long time, they retired, the department hired somebody in that only had a couple years of experience, and yet the department retained the budget for that position as if they had a 30-year employee still filling it. So we yanked all of that back as well. There was quite a bit of padding in the personnel budget, and, and it's all been pulled out as much as possible. The last thing was, several years ago, the board approved a compensation structure where if an employee is performing, gets a good evaluation on their annual evaluation, they could qualify for a 3% merit increase. When I took over as chief financial officer, those merit increases were being based on a full, or budgeted on a full-year basis. So it didn't matter if someone's evaluation date happened in August or whether it happened in May, that 3% was budgeted for the entire year, which doesn't make any sense. So we, we fixed that as well. It's now based on the actual evaluation date. If they're only going to be getting 3% more for the last month of the year, that's all we budget for. The other thing that we put into place beginning of last fiscal year, so fiscal year '24, was asking all the general funded departments to perform a quarterly budget to actual analysis. Very basic budget analysis, but fundamental to controlling costs is having people look at the expenses on a regular basis. And if they are outpacing where their budget says they should be at any point in the year, hitting pause, providing a justification, or coming up with an action plan to make sure that by the time they get to the end of the year, that they are still within budget. And so that is what we have done in, in, in recent past to address some of the, the issues and try to address the structural deficit that we have going on. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. If you would stay close, we've got two people that have signed up. I'm going to get through them and then we'll go into board discussion. First one being Scotty McClure. Jennifer Esposito, you're on deck.
Scotty from Bullhead, first again, huh? First thing you gotta do is get Elon Musk down here and lock the doors to procurement I'm not familiar with a zero-based budget. I don't like change, just like that. And you guys are gonna do this today, I guess. I don't know anything about the zero line item or service level. You, you got, how in the heck is the health department, the jail, and the sheriff's department going to do this? I just, and, and the court system. You've got three departments there, you just can't do this with, I don't think. Maybe if you could try it on a little smaller scale with just certain departments would be better than slamming the public with, now we're zero-based budget. I mean, we were never, like last year, we were never $18.5 million in the hole. People kept saying that we were, and we weren't. Couple of us got up here and told you weren't in the hole. You had dreams, like building a Taj Mahal courthouse and this and that. Well, there goes four and a half, $6 million or whatever, that was not in the budget. Just doesn't make sense to me. Well, I don't know that much about zero-based budget, so that's up to you guys to know everything.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito Kingman. I'm in favor of zero-based budgeting. I've always been in favor of zero-based budgeting. It increases transparency and accountability for the finances, that the taxpayers are funding these different departments. But what I would like to suggest to this board is that you implement zero-based budgeting in a trial department. I'm going to suggest development services, because on information and belief, I have a strong inkling that taxpayers would benefit greatly from starting with that department. I suggest that you implement it beginning in fiscal year 2025 for a 12-month period. That way you can decide whether or not it works. Because real businesses in the real world do this all the time. Only in government do you say, well, if we don't budget for it, we can't spend it unless we have a special meeting and amend the budget. So what happens is, if there's money budgeted that's not spent, departments have a bad habit of trying to find ways to spend it at the end of the year. We're finding that out at the federal level, thanks to DOGE. We could maybe think of this as a mini DOGE for Mojave County. But I, I think that especially, you know, there's been some changes and some reforms in, in development services, but I think that that would be one department that would benefit greatly, as opposed to a small department such as like economic development, where I think we have one or maybe one and a half full-time employees. So, you know, it wouldn't affect the courts, it wouldn't affect anything else, but I think that it would definitely shine a light on how feasible this would be into implementing it into other departments. And then at the end of fiscal year 2025, you could reevaluate whether or not you wanted to implement it in any other departments, or whether you wanted to implement it across the board. Thank you.
Luke, if you want to come back up to the podium, I'm going to open up the board discussion. Who wants to start? Supervisor Letman.
Well, Jennifer, you took away most of my talk. Thank you. I, I liked the presentation. Just a couple of points, the corporate background I came out of, we absolutely use zero-based budgeting, and this is not something you can start on a, on a large scale initially. I actually kind of like the idea of public works. I think that needs to be looked at a little bit more. I'm not, that's probably a little bigger than I'd like, but still, that, that's a good idea. One of the things I took away from ZBB was it's all about a process, okay? And I think one of the big benefits to a for-profit company that I worked for was that it improves services, the delivery to a customer. And in fact, our customers are everything from taxpayers to citizens to developers to recipients of public health. So I think it's a good idea. I would really recommend that you put in your budget for the next year, the high, I'm not a consultant guy, but this is one of those areas where you're going to probably need a consultant from the outside to walk you through the process of zero-based budgeting. Because as you noted in your disadvantages, the resistance to this inside an organization can be immense, and it really takes somebody, a, a neutral party to almost tear down some of those barriers. And those are my thoughts.
Thank you. The comments from the board. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think to do it countywide in one swipe is too big of a bite to chew. And so I really think we ought to pick a department that we apply this to. Probably should be a department that's not majority grant-funded, because the, the grants are a little bit different than general fund, or when they're funded by the services that they provide. So we might want to consider if we want to move forward with this, we might want to give some thought about what department you'd like to do that in. Thank you, sir.
Luke, I've got a few, a few questions. I think that the further away you are from something, generally the easier it appears solved. And then only when you get into it, you see how nuanced something can really be. So I have a lot of questions. What I, what I'm personally interested in for this organization is some sort of a combination between cost control for the public that we serve, the businesses that we serve, and performance enhancement. And I didn't really hear or see a lot of bullet points that focused on performance enhancement in your presentation. I think that this organization should have a mantra that all of our departments are never satisfied with our previous best, right? We should always be looking for opportunities to improve, streamline, all these different things. Use technology where appropriate. The example that I would use is where this board, I mean, I put it on the, the agenda, I think, three or four times, where we were going from a manual hard copy plan review, submit and review process, where we had a business that wanted to build a new building, and had to, they had to print out $1,000 worth of paper, multiple sets of plans, either physically drop it off or physically mail it to PO Box 7000, it comes here, then you have somebody sort out, sort all that stuff, and then you have somebody drive it over to the department, and then it sits in their area, tell somebody there sorts it, then it gets dropped off on somebody's desk, then when they get to it, they check it off and make sure your submittal's complete. And only then, and that, that could be a lot of time, right? Only then does it start the 30-day clock for having to turn that around. So what, what we did was, we said, hey, organizations of a similar size and even smaller have an option to do full electronic plan, submittal and review. So that, submit it all online, everything that you need to solve, submit online, save all that cost for paper, all right there in the same spot. Everybody knows, you know, all the decision chain stuff is there, multiple departments can look at their parts concurrently. All the comments on red lines and things like that are all in one place. You don't have to search around if you're a developer on where the heck your plans are at, what stage it's at, it's all right there. That's an example. We need to be doing that everywhere. I think that this seems a little bit confusing to me. My question to you is, okay, so you have directors and managers coming up with all these, what you call decision packages. What's, what's above that? What are they, what's the roadmap? So when I'm thinking about all these departments out there going out and saying, okay, here's the decision packages, are there a set of strategic goals that is set by the policy board that are above those, that everybody is trying to tie all of their decision packages to one or more of those strategic goals for an organization? Because if you don't have, and maybe I'm wrong, but if you don't have a set of, from the policy board, set of strategic goals that you're trying to hit with your budgeting method, then you could have five people that are elected here that value some things and don't value other things, and their strategic, you know, individual sets of strategic goals could look vastly different. So how do you bring that together? So that the budgeting method. I have questions. And also I have questions about how the metrics work, right? So you set a budget for somebody, but then there should be measuring to properly manage, and there should be... And there should be reporting on those performance targets, right? So I assume that if you're setting a budget through this decision package, that you're going to have a set budget, but you're going to have performance target same time. And then you're going to measure metrics to see if it was effective or not. Is this money that we're pushing towards these things that align with an overarching set of strategic goals? Are they, are they working? Are they not working? Do they need recourse corrections? These are the types of questions that I have. And I, I'm just, you know, from an academic standpoint, and I think your presentation was good, but I think it was still really simplistic. And I think there's a lot more nuance that goes into this. So I mean overarching, I think that there should be some sort of whatever we do in this county. As one board member, I think that it should be maximize cost control, maximize performance enhancement. How we get there? Oh, I don't, I don't really have a set, set the opinion on that. I certainly don't want to, from a policy board standpoint, I don't want to micromanage every single one of the departments and divisions. And that seems like the wrong way to go. And that's why we pay you, that's why we pay manager Elton. That's your job. But in accordance with the set of strategic goals that my policies, so I guess these are where my question, I don't have any answer.
Chairman Lienfelder, thank you for those comments. Uh, I would absolutely agree that having strategic goals, knowing what the board's priorities are, a little bit more than just we need a balanced budget, because we all, we all know we need a balanced budget. Uh, but if, if we had a little bit more insight into what the board's priorities, priorities are, especially since we have 60% of the board being new this year, that, that would certainly be helpful. You, you asked about metrics and, and, and measuring those metrics. And again, that is part of that, that front end analysis that zero based budgeting calls for is that you look at not only the, the cost inputs and the cost drivers, but also determining for a particular department that is called to deliver a certain set of services, what is, what is acceptable? You know, are we going to deliver the service? You know, if we're talking about customer satisfaction, are we going to be doing some sort of periodic customer satisfaction survey? Are we going to be happy with a 75% satisfaction rate versus a 95% satisfaction rate? Yes, you need, you need to have metrics in place. With our current budget process, we do ask each of the departments to come up with some metrics. We ask the departments to come up with those on their own, because the departments are the ones that, that know what's important for them to measure absent some overarching county wide strategic plan.
Sit on it. That's where I think the first, the first step is in this whole thing. If this board wants to truly feel like it's in control of the budgeting process, because what I heard in your presentation is that it's staff that comes up decision, right? But what's the target? There's no set strategic goals from a policy board for all of those people when they're coming up decision packages shoot for, say, okay, this decision package accomplishes the board's strategic goals, one, two, and. And every single thing that we do should accomplish one or more strategic overarching goal that this policy board wants. I think that's where you start. Otherwise, you're shooting for something and you don't have a target. You're just going to have everybody shooting all over the. Got to bring, you got to bring them all together somehow, some sort of strategic target.
Chairman Lienfelder, I completely agree with you there. Having those strategic goals and that strategic plan would give us something to execute against. Uh, that's not something that we have had in the past. I would just offer a couple of other thoughts. I, I think that Supervisor Letman, you hit the nail on the head when you say that, you know, this would likely require budgeting for some sort of consulting service. I personally don't have any hands on experience with zero based budgeting. Neither do the staff in my office. Uh, I don't know if there's other folk around the county in other departments that have hands on experience with it. But it is a complex process. There's a lot that goes into it. And I don't think that with the current level of resources, staffing or otherwise, but specifically staffing, I don't know that this is a, a task that, that is something that would be achieved at a high level with the current level of staffing because of the additional work that goes into it. You mentioned Supervisor Letman, I, I think, maybe it was, maybe it was Chairman Lienfelder about reducing paper. Somebody spoke about improving transparency. I will say that last year we transitioned to using a digital budgeting project or a product producing a digital budget book. And that was quite a bit different from the old paper printouts. You know, the board members used to get a binder that was so thick that you could, you know, you could use it as a very glorified paperweight. But even that digital budget book last year, if you were to print that out, it would have been just about 1,600 pages long. So an awful lot of information and that is with one budget from each department. And so when I talk about the amount of documentation that could be generated from digital budget or zero based budgeting, you know, I think we would easily be looking at at least three times that and, and more likely than not more than that. So the, the question is, even with those strategic goals and that strategic plan in place, that's an awful lot of documentation that requires staff to go through and to go over all the details. And so that, that is my, that is my main concern. Uh, another, a member of the public mentioned implementing this in FY25. We are already in FY25. The FY26 budget process is well underway. We have an internally imposed deadline of having the board approve a FY26 budget prior to the end of FY25. So prior to June 30th, that is the goal that we have set for ourselves as a county. So I would, I would say that the earliest that we could even implement on a trial basis for, you know, one or more departments would be FY27. We are, as I said, we started the FY26 budget process in October. We are four months into that almost at this point. It's, it's a little bit late in the game to be changing tack on, on that. I, I think that if we were to do so, we would be setting ourselves up for failure. So I just want to put that out there.
I appreciate your presentation. It looks swell on paper. But I think, you know, no matter what budget process we use in this county, I speak to every one of the employees. Hopefully we all have a mindset that we're never going to be satisfied with our previous. Always be looking for better ways to, right? That are focused on cost control and performance efficiency and improvement. No matter what budget process we should all be doing. As far as where it's at right now, it's just too, a little too nebulous. I know it's used very successfully in many, many, many private organizations, behalf of their shareholders, things like that. But it's just too nebulous right now as far as how that would all play out Mojave County right now. So until I get more definition on the strategic goal component, those types of things, I'm going to reserve.
Chairman.
Supervisor Letman.
I have a question. Do we know if any other counties in Arizona use zero based budgeting?
Chairman Lienfelder, Supervisor Letman, to the best of my knowledge, I believe the city of Phoenix, I don't believe there's any counties, county governments that are using zero based budgeting.
Let's double check that. I, that would be a useful exercise to go through to see how another large city or county in the state does it.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Manager Elton.
Not to belabor the point, but since the discussion has gone into the details and, and I truly personally welcome the dialogue, the input, the, the thought process from each and every board member and, and the comments that have been provided. What I intend to do, if I may, take a couple of minutes and just use an example that really is realistic part of services that we do. And if I may, I'll start with the, the services that we provide through our indigent defense services. That department is funded, is those are mandated services. The overarching, as you discussed, Mr. Chairman, the overarching goal here is to provide defense to those that cannot afford it. This is a general fund paid for services that these departments, the public defender, legal defender, legal advocate, and the indigent services are all general fund services. They're all reactionary services, meaning we don't get to plan how many attorneys and how many crimes are committed or the level of those that we can plan for them. So throughout the year, these services are tracked and we're, we, chief financial officer and myself are provided updates as to the cost of those as we approach the end of the year. And year after year, those services are expanded through legislative process while they're being, while they're being expanding, Title 36 or Title 13 or some of the other legislative processes that impacts what we do. And, and what we get to do at the end of the day is no more than ensuring that we have in-house attorneys and supporting staff or contract attorneys to assign to these cases to ensure that they're covered and they go through the process. My point to you is, is there is truly a, a limited flexibility as to how we fund, how we plan for and fund them. And year after year, our cost has gone up and we've tried every way we can to transfer whatever funds available at the end of the year from one department to the next. And we've made the board aware of those just to ensure that we're staying float. I, you know, I use this as an example just really to make the point that, and I guarantee you, Mr. Chairman and every board member, that through every step of it, those individuals are seeking the most cost efficient way to, you know, to fund these services. We fund them with in-house employees to the, to the extent that we can without exceeding the, the workload recommended or allowed by the various standards that are, that are, that guide these, these departments. So, you know, my point is when we talk about overarching goals and, and objectives and so on, this is one area where we're challenged. And, and please understand, I honestly do not, I don't, this is not me making excuses other than to make you aware of the various constraints that we deal with as we approach budgets and fund services and plan for them and then react to them. So I, I wanted to offer, offer that for whatever it's worth and we'll, we'll continue to practice and implement to the extent possible, cost controls and performance enhancement. Every chance we can, we try to make those part of our budgeting process, present them to the board and make you aware of where we think they make sense and the value that they bring and the benefit from them. But I appreciate the time you allowed me to just give you this example and share those thoughts with you.
Other board comments. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There will be things that, such as the public defender that we can't, we're bound by statute. But we had trouble a couple of years ago getting a list of things that were actually mandated by statute. Those are the things that we have to do, the things that are mandated by statute. So in reality, that should be our first goal is to do what is mandated by statute. So we had trouble delineating what was mandated by statute from what people wanted to be done. Cause you have, you had, you had mandated and essential, but the only thing that's essential to me is what's mandated. So we had trouble breaking this down because we have, we don't have clear lines between those things over departments and even to employees. How much time did this employee spend on the mandated service versus the essential service? And to me, that's the first thing you have to do is figure out what's, what is mandated by law. And everything else is basically elective. But if we can't even do that, if we can't even delineate what's mandated by law from the other things that we do, we're never going to get to the bottom of what we actually have to do. And until I wouldn't raise taxes, you guys were digging into this stuff. So as it, as it sits now, the only way I can get people to dig into their budget is to not give them the money to, to do what they want to do. And that's basically, I'd much rather, let's all take a look and see and go get down to the zero level and look at what we do. That way we can figure out how to do it versus creating a crisis by not giving you more tax money to spend. So we're almost drifting into the, the part where in government where we tell the elected officials, we can't do what you want to do. We just can't get there. I've had that speech several times, believe it or not, over 25 years I've been doing this. You come in with ideas and then staff tells you why you can't do those things. And generally I don't believe half of it. I think we need to push forward. I don't think the public wants us to wait till 27. I think we should pick a department that we want to do and, and move on with that and take on that extra workload to do it. I'd much rather do it that way than get presented a budget at the end, which I can either vote thumbs up or thumbs down. But, but I think we should move ahead. I don't think that we should just say it's too late, maybe next year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Borelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think every department head already understands their job on, on identifying and they're basically doing zero based, based on their departments. But I, I believe these need to be broken down into three categories. Must have, meaning mandated, need to have, and then of course, nice to have. That's what they'd like to have. Okay, but we got to get the mandated ones, the mandatory must have, and then we have to have the must, need to have. That's, I think, the priorities. I think that's what we should be setting the, the policy agenda on three separate categories. Of course, I doubt there's going to be anything in the, the nice to have bubble when you start looking at the mandated must and the need to have. But I think that should be the direction that county administrators should be doing, passing that delegate, that down to the, the department heads and really getting down to the, the bare bones and see where we are.
Mr. Chairman. Give that, uh, well, let me make a comment first. I think in 2023, our old board, I, I put an agenda item on, and it was approved by the board that we would start categorizing everything that we did as mandated, essential and non-essential, right? Try to make this budgeting process easier. Isn't that not incorporated?
We did that in FY23, Chairman Lienfelder, or excuse me, for FY24's budget. We included that breakdown when we transitioned to the ClearGov budgeting software last year. When I presented the budget to this board, I did mention the fact that, and I mean, that, that exercise showed, I believe the number was about 86% of the general funds expenses were, fell into the mandated category. It was 84, 86%, I believe. But explained to the board last year, when I, when I was presenting the, the FY25 budget, that, that budgeting software doesn't really have the capacity for presenting that information. And that we were, we were moving away from, from collecting all of that data and trying to, I guess, fit a square peg into a round hole within the budgeting software to do that. Uh, even our county's ERP system that we use for budgeting, for the, the actual accounting for the budget doesn't provide for monitoring and measuring essential. monitoring and measuring essential, mandated discretionary. Those are the three categories, the terms that we used for Supervisor Barelli when he's mentioning the, the must and the needs and the nice. Shall I continue? So that is not something that, that is not something that we pushed down to the departments this year as they were putting together FY26 budget.
You didn't push down the mandated, essential and non-essential?
Correct. And, and part of, and part of that-
That's a board policy decision. We, we wanted that. So how do you get there?
Chairman, we, we discussed it during the, the budget presentation last year. When, when I talked through that, there wasn't any objections from the board. I, I am finished, Chairman.
Okay. Well, you know, there are several things that are, that are mandated. Again, I'd like to see a set of strategic goals overarching from the policy board guide everything that we do. As far as nice to haves, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there's only just a few things that we do. The first one that comes to mind is like economic development. I think economic development has a budget of maybe close to $900,000. So if you're looking for a, a pilot project or a pilot department, maybe start there and get the board supervisors on board with exactly what economic development means and how we're going to do it. And that's one example, but I'd like to see that mandated and essential and non-essential split for everybody that's on this board now so that we understand. First things first, we have to do first, first, for a political subdivision of the state of Arizona, we have to do mandated stuff first. Chairman, I-
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Sam, I- Go ahead.
Thank you. As you, as you highlighted, and for the benefit of the three new board members, we did have last year four, three or four specific and separate board meetings and intended entirely to discuss the budget. And in that process, we discussed, we provided a list of mandated, essential and non-essential. We will be happy to update that list for you, for the board now. But let me just point out again, based on those meetings that we had and the discussion that we had and the definition that we all agreed on, that our, our justice system consists of, and this was a definition that the board discussed and approved and agreed on. Our justice system consists of the courts, the law enforcement, sheriff department and the jail, as well as the county attorney's office and the defense side of the family. Those four departments are mandated services. They're funded through the general fund and those four departments alone consume more than 80%, as you just heard of our general fund available balance. That leaves many other departments such as the assessor, the treasurer, the recorder, medical examiner services, to name a few. Those are also mandated and are supposed to be funded by the general fund. And we find a way, at the end of the day, and I may be getting ahead of ourselves here in, in these comments, but at the end of the day, when you add up the costs of those services and you compare them to the available funds, they exceed the available funds and hence the, the structural deficit that we're in. We will be glad to update the list. We did provide a list of mandated, essential and non-essential. It's probably due for an update, though I doubt it will change very much. But I think we owe it to all of you incumbent and new board members to provide that and we will provide it the earliest possible.
Appreciate that, Sam. With our new board, it's good to get that recommitment. Are there, are there discussion points? Does this require action or? Supervisor Gould.
Um, we may not want to define what is, what is mandated. Cause that was, to me, that was a problem last time was that I could not, from looking at the things that you guys gave me, I could not tell what was mandated by statute and what was what you called essential.
Managerial officers, did you say you're going to bring everybody, get a recommitment on everybody sitting on the board today? What, what all those three categories are?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, I will be glad to do so. We will take the information that was presented. We will update it so it's current to reflect any additional changes in the statutes or, or legislation. And we will provide it to the board in the most expeditious way possible, certainly well before the, we get to the tentative budget presentation to you.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh, this was agendized only for a presentation. So if it's okay with everybody, Sam, you're going to, you're going to follow up. I mean, I think you've got clear direction on where the board, what the board wants to see. So if it's okay with everybody, we're going to move on to item number 45. Uh, discussion, possible action. Approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number 2025 dash 024, approving changes to the Mojave County Procurement Code. Including, but not limited to, the use of multi-year technology software contracts, clarifying thresholds for simplified construction contracts and refining the procurement appeals process. Do you have one person sign up to speak? Do you want to speak for?
You can tell me what you'd like me to do. I just was going to kind of give a quick summary of why we're presenting this to the board, why I'm requesting a code change. So in October, Supervisor Lincoln Velter, you had agendized an item regarding the use of long-term software contracts. Um, I believe you called them legacy software contracts. Since that time, I've been meeting with our chief financial officer and our chief information officer. I guess that's not his title. Our IT director, I don't know what his official title is anymore. So we've been discussing that and talking through what would be the impact to the county? How do we achieve what I believe the overall goal of bringing back a policy related to software procurements was? And essentially it's, we're, we're already doing a lot of the things, but it's not covered in policy. So we are looking at software agreements. When we have these long-term contracts, we are looking at it and saying, is this still a service that we need? And we're justifying it, but there's nothing mandating it. So IT doesn't have a lot of teeth, procurement doesn't have a lot of teeth. So essentially, in creating a software policy in procurement, our policy is our procurement code. And so we have, um, one of the big changes in the procurement code is adding a term limit on software agreements, essentially saying any software purchase will not be more, for more than a five-year agreement. And that if we are going to continue with a software provider beyond five years, we will create an internal procedure. I will work with the county manager, with the IT director and our chief financial officer to make sure that we're making procedural determinations that show that we are using sound business practices when deciding whether or not to continue using a software provider. And so step one would be the policy, the change in the code. Step two will be us working on a procedural document. The benefit of using procedures is if we miss the mark, if it's not implementable, then it's something that we can tweak, we can adjust. We don't have to come back to the board and say, hey, we need to adjust. What we ask the departments to provide for us is justification, but I think it still accomplishes the overall goal. And then I didn't want to waste a good opportunity on, on a code change that was necessary to look at some of our things. So we cleaned up some deadlines and some documentation related to our legal remedies. And then we clarified the formal thresholds. One of the things that the state does, they have what they call simplified construction procurement. And I'm actually working and meeting with folks at the state to see if there's something that we can implement on small dollar construction projects. Right now, they go through the same process as multimillion dollar construction projects. And so trying to find ways to be a little bit more efficient in meeting the county's needs and making sure that we are still complying with Title 34. So it just allows us to develop small, our simplified construction procedures. Other than that, the code is pretty much the same as it was before, just adding the term limits and giving me the authority to come up with procedures to enforce those term limits on software contracts and then the few minor clarifications.
Thank you, Tara. If you'd stay close, I'm going to bring you back up after Jennifer Esposito signed up.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito Kingman. I'm in favor of this. Anything you can do to make any department more efficient is a good thing. I just wanted to point out for new members who weren't here that in the past, because it says specifically on this agenda item, refining the procurement appeals process. So prior to new members coming on the board, there was a problem with procurement in that they had a two-track appeals thing. You could appeal this way or you could appeal that way. And so there was an issue with KP Ventures Drilling Company where they had instructed them to appeal by one of the two tracks and it was the one that did not follow state law. So that's why procurement is being sued by KP Ventures for unpaid invoices. But there was a problem with that. So, so you know, because this does, you know, update, they, everything should follow the statute, keeps you out of trouble. But I just wanted to say that I'm in favor of this. So since I have to be here until call to the public at the end, I thought I'd take the opportunity to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, can you come back up to the podium? I do know that our, our code is fully compliant with state law and it's also, I believe, still substantially based on the American Bar Association's model for procurement code for state and local governments. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. I had one question for you and I'm not sure if it's, it's, I'm sure you can answer the question, but I, I see Public Health Director back there. So I know with, with technical registrants, with design services, designers, geologists, those types of special, specialty professions, there's a direct select up to a certain dollar amount. With, with attorneys, I know that there's a simplified program to hire attorneys. But I had a question. Is there anything in, how do we hire docs if we need a physician? Um, is there? It doesn't seem like it would be like it's the same level of, of certification, education, training. You know, these, these are professionals, you know, at the same level, in my opinion, as, as engineers or architects or attorneys, but, but physicians. How are physicians hired? And is there any process for us to, to be able to take into account that same level of professionalism and education in hiring physicians?
So you asked several questions there. Someone going to try to tackle them one at a time. So yes, there's, the direct select method is actually covered by statute. That's what gives us the ability to select engineers, architects, technical registrants up to $500,000 based on the recommendation of the county engineer essentially. And then we go through a qualifications-based selection. In Mojave County, we call it a request for qualifications for any of those types of services. That's all very prescriptive in Title 34, which is why our code just alludes to any construction or construction-related services will follow state statute, will follow Title 34. When it comes to attorneys, we have a specific section of our procurement code that addresses how we will hire attorneys. And I think that part of that is the level of expertise that we need. The other part of it is how quickly we need to be able to move when hiring an attorney. Generally speaking, from the point that we're ready to make an award recommendation to the board, we're waiting a minimum of 11 days before the board sees something and actually approves it. And all of the work that has to happen ahead of time for us to get to the point of recommending award. So our procurement code specifically addresses attorneys and gives me the authority to sign agreements for attorneys up to $100,000 annually. And then also says that we can basically use sound judgment to select an attorney. If, if we know it's going to be more than $100,000, we're directed to use a request for proposals process. We have treated in the past when we've needed services from, we have a county physician. I don't know if that's officially their title. We've gone through an RFP process for that. For medical examiner services, we went through an RFP process. RFP is the best value process. It allows you to look at qualifications and price. And we would work with whatever department it was that needed the services to say what matters the most to you. Generally speaking, we want price to be a pretty big component of that. It makes sure that we are cost efficient in who we select, but it doesn't have to be the biggest part. And so I would say an RFP is like, it's kind of the mix between a qualifications-only based selection and then you negotiate the price after the fact. That's what RFP is. And then hard bid says, we know exactly what we want. We're telling you, meet our specs and we're going to evaluate on price. The RFP is the happy medium. And so the way our code is written right now, what I believe state statute would support right now is that we would go through a request for proposals process and we would just make sure that we really focused on qualifications and an understanding of what those qualifications, what their approach to the services, what their licensure would be as the primary factors in that scoring process and making sure that we had a committee that could score that.
Thank you. Any other questions? During that, I entertain a motion. Or I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per to have it, do have it, so order it. Thank you. Item number 46.
Yes.
Uh, we'll take five minutes appropriate. Is that okay? Five minute break. Five-minute break.
Are we back on? Okay, great.
Yeah, we're on. Kirk School, did you have something to?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. In going through this exercise for the Mojave County Board of Supervisors Rules of Order, one of the main goals was to simplify it. And there was some concern that because I removed the call to the public form, the consent form, that it would no longer exist. And I just wanted to let you know that it still would exist. It would just be a separate form that would not be a part of the Supervisors Rules of Order. We're still working on doing the forms themselves because at this point of technology, I guess, we don't necessarily need all the information that the forms currently require unless you are in a public hearing for a rezone. We don't necessarily need all the addresses and the telephone numbers and things like that. And with everybody, I don't know if you've seen, some of the information is out there being used by people for bad reasons. And so we would like to minimize some of that. But the call to the public form is still going to be there. There's still the form guidelines that we'd like us public to, you know, agree to. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that that was there.
Okay, thank you. We do have a couple of members of the audience sign up to speak. We'll get to them. Scotty McClure. Jennifer Esposito, you're on deck.
Scotty from Bullhead. And I don't have to give my address anymore. You shouldn't have been asking that the whole time anyway. You don't need my phone number unless it is for like Laura and I had a little talk. It's Laura and Ryan that made up all these lines that were marking out some of the stuff. So on my form that she gave me last meeting, everything was marked out on page 15 through 17. Well, they're gone now. So if you guys okay this, and I agree with her, you don't need all this information. I've never given out my address. It's easy, go to the recorder's office and find it anyway. Or follow me home, whatever. But especially a woman shouldn't be giving out her home address. There's some crazy wackos out there. That's why our prisons are so full. Page five. There's things here that you're making the public be nice and all this stuff to you guys. There's nothing in here that says you have to be nice to us. Well, a few months ago, just before the elections, Mr. Letman went after me for over 10 minutes at the board of, at the board meeting down in Bullhead, at the city council meeting, and they couldn't stop him. He ran it and raved and went after me and it's on tape on channel four, not some word or whatever that I'm saying, you know, whatever. But he went on and ragged me for over 10 minutes. Now, you guys should be able to be held to a higher standard than me. I'm not seeing that in here, so you need to add that. This printing is so small and I got my glasses here, I just don't have them on. Who are you going to use as a parliamentarian? Hope we don't ever get that far. Used to be Ryan, but this marked out too. I didn't prepare this very good, but it's just, you guys are gonna, you know, whatever, throw this away, let Laura do her thing with the paperwork. You don't need this stuff. And it's separate. I think, you know, Bullhead doesn't do a, you just get up and he asks, anybody want to get up and say something? If you do away with a paperwork, I don't know by law that county supervisors has to or whatever, but you could really, that way I could show up at noon instead of wait until afternoon to get up here and say something. I had to cancel a VA appointment that I'd made a year in advance last meeting because, well, I couldn't count it since you guys were after 12 o'clock for my appointment in Nevada by the Speedway at the big place. My appointment was at 1:00 for foot appointment. I go see my foot doctor once a year up there. So once you see him once a year, then you're allowed to make another appointment. So that's why you make an appointment a year in advance. Well, it just worked out, it was two Mondays ago. So I don't know if you can cut out even the paperwork, even asking, it's just, I know there's been times you've asked, is there anybody else? And that's cool because there's sometimes, like this last one here, and she was just up here. Nobody's talking about AI computers. You go five years, I know I'm getting off subject, but what happens if you get in the five-year contract and all of a sudden you gotta go to A1, AI or whatever it is? It's so far out of there.
Before I call up the next picker, I just want to read this into the record. It's 2C. The chairperson shall have the authority to limit the time for debate on any topic or item by a member of the board, but not the ability to eliminate debate. The chairperson shall make every effort to not allow debate to digress the personal attack. It is not the person, but the measure, issue, or item under question that is the subject of debate in the same spirit. Other board members should not disparage each other, county employees or presenters. Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito-Kingman. And I would also like to remind the chairman and the board that the courts have repeatedly ruled that content-based speech restrictions are constitutionally prohibited. So it's a very fine line between deciding what a personal attack is and what someone's free speech right is, and I'm just going to leave that there. Now, I know that five of you up there all did your homework and read this thoroughly, so then you already know why you can't pass it as written. And I know that at least four of you have the legislative and government background to read and understand it. So I'm going to direct you to page 18, which is, at least that's how it comes up on my, on the backup documents on my phone, which unfortunately don't download clearly. But it appears that it has not been changed from where it says that the speakers for the call to the public have to sign up before the meeting. Now, I remember that you gave staff direction, that you wanted the call to the public speakers to be able to sign up right up until call to the public. So if you pass it as written, you have codified that we have to be here at 9:30 in the morning to speak at the very end of the meeting. I too take objection to the idea that call to the public is after the quote, "business of the county," because the business of the people is absolutely the business of the county. And it should come before the business of special interests like developers or bureaucrats or presentations or proclamations or any of this other nonsense that you waste time on. But the problem that you have is some of the, what former supervisor Angus called highly scripted frequent flyers, and I'm not scripted at all, but a lot of the people that do routinely come to this come for agenda items and calls to the public. So, you know, if they have to sit here all day and wait for calls to the public at the very, very end, then everyone, including you, is tired and cranky, they are too. It doesn't actually further the quote, "business of the county" having it that way. But if you pass it as you have it and clearly nobody read it on the last meeting, or you would have caught that thing about, you know, signing up for call to the public before the meeting. Apparently the public is the only one who reads the supporting documents thoroughly. You know, pass it or not pass it as written, but I consider it a slap in the face to the constituents, some of whom travel a very long way. If they come to speak on an agenda item and they want to consolidate their time and speak on something that's not on the agenda, they're now forced to sit here all day. They pay your salaries, salaries which increase this year, but I think, what, $20,000? One would think for 20 grand, you could hear the people first. Thank you.
I'd open it up to the board for discussion. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if we look at page four, H1, it says, except as outlined herein, only elected officials and county employees may submit items for consideration on the board's agenda. So does that mean any county employee can put something on the agenda?
Chairman Lingefelter?
Please.
Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, Supervisor Gould, I think that's a valid question. The intent was to try to adopt what we currently have is, the idea is that items that are on the board's agenda are items that are submitted through staff or through the supervisors and not through the public. We just, I just, we want to keep the same practice where it's not the public that's submitting an item. If you want me to wordsmith this, I can make that a little bit more clear, but the idea is that it's staff and the county board, and supervisors that submit items for the board's agenda.
I understand that, Attorney S. Wood, but I think that, as much as I like my mechanic, Jake, I think that Jake's request for agenda items should come through me or come through department heads or whatever, so however you want to do that.
Okay.
That also comes up in number two. And then, on page 13, five, we strike the county attorney as the parliamentarian. So does that mean that the majority will decide a parliamentary question?
To answer that, I've been here for almost eight years and you can tell I do some good things, I do some things that aren't maybe so good. I'm not a very good parliamentarian, let's be honest. I have some different viewpoints of how things should be done. And so it's difficult, and it may not just be me, it could be our office. If our office is here, it's difficult to be the parliamentarian because it's your board. This is not the Board of Supervisors and the county attorney. The county attorney is here to advise and provide advice to you, and we try to provide that advice to you, but in terms of running the board, it's your board. And so if a parliamentarian is called, it should, I think it should be the chairperson. But if you want the county attorney to still do that, we can certainly do that.
I'm not concerned whether the county attorney does it or doesn't do it, I just want to know who's going to do it. And it sounds like the majority will then do it. If there's a question of parliamentary nature, then the majority vote of the board will determine it?
And I could put that in there, I could put that in there, or I could make it the chairperson, or I could go back to the county attorney as well. Whatever the board prefers.
If you make the chair the parliamentarian or give him that authority, that authority can still be overridden by a majority anyway, so that would probably be the easiest way to do it.
And I can do that. The chairman will be the parliamentarian, except that a majority of the board may overrule the parliamentarian.
That works for me. That's what I had.
You. Other comment? Supervisor Letman.
Bear with me as I go through this. I had a sense from looking at the old document that basically any member of the public could ask to speak on any agenda item, so, which I have no problem with. But I'm looking at page five and then over to page seven, and I'm confused about, are we still giving the public the right to pretty much talk about any item on the agenda? It's, it's just not clear to me.
Certainly, I'll try to answer that question, Supervisor Letman. What I did was, what I proposed was trying to say, okay, these are the items that the public can speak on, and it would be agenda items. And those agenda items would be, you know, anything authorized by law by public participation. Those are usually zoning items, ordinances, anything that requires a public hearing. Whenever the chairperson calls the person, you know, if the chairperson says, hey, Mr. or Miss so-and-so, can you please speak? Then the chairperson will call that person. Or if the majority of the board says, hey, we want to hear from this person, then they could choose that. Or if they request to speak on an item on the agenda, so any item on the agenda they'd be able to.
Would that include the consent agenda?
Yes, and I, this was a hard one for me. I, I'm trying to, I was trying to do what past practices were and also try to get a feel for what the current board members want. And the impression I got was that you want to hear it for any item. That would include the consent agenda, but I can make changes if you wish. It's, it's a hard one. I don't know how to, how to.
Well, I'd like to hear some input from other members of the board on this. Anybody?
Repeat the question, please.
I said, I would like to hear if there's any other input from the board. I pretty much think the public should have the right to speak about just about anything on the agenda, including the consent agenda.
Supervisor Barelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. There is a process. They can reach out to us, our constituents can reach out to us, ask us to pull something off the consent agenda. It's easy peasy.
I agree with that.
Yeah. You know, I like that. Before the meeting starts, come up, say, we'd like, can you pull this off the agenda? Sure, I mean, we can do that. We have that authority. We still are the representative former government of our constituents. If they want to reach out to us, they should be able to do that. And we, obviously, we have the authority to yank something off the consent agenda.
Okay, so that sounds like status quo, which I'm fine with on that. Can we go to page?
I'm sorry, I started to interrupt, but I'm just, I was just trying to refresh my memory of what I was going through. The consent agenda, this is on page four, these items, including resolutions, which are routine or administrative in nature, will be approved in a single motion, except that any board member may request any consent agenda to be removed. So it would be the status quo. So you have items five through 40 on the consent agenda. If you, if you approve all of them by consent, then they will not be polled, they will not be heard by the public. But if a member of the public comes up and says, you know, Supervisor A, can you pull 17, 19, and that supervisor wishes to do it, then that supervisor would be able to do that.
And that sounds good.
And, yeah, and then that jives with six, where the board, the public may be permitted to speak on those things, but only if it's been pulled from the consent, so the way we currently do it.
Okay. On page eight, we've, under decorum in debate, we've removed most of the procedure around dress code. What's our thinking on that?
Well, I'll tell you why I did it. I think we're adults here and I think we can decide how we want to dress and how people dress, and I'm not here to dictate, I'm not here to dictate how people should dress. I think there was an issue a long, long time ago, and I think some of the people in the audience may remember this, where there was an issue about some different clothing items and things, and there was a lot of debates about it. And I think you're adults and we can move past that.
Okay, the only reason I brought that up was that subitem B under number five, which was the FCC guidelines. I mean, were you required to abide by that or not?
I think there's an issue about, there's a question about that because we, we, we put this on the TV district, you know, but I'm not, I'm not a media lawyer. It'd be something I could ask. We have an attorney on retainer out of DC, we could ask him.
You're on the TV district?
It does. I thought it, I thought it still did.
The other.
You got a point on the FCC. Yes, you got a point on the FCC. Since we televise this, it's obviously going out on the, on the wire, so.
That also on the county's YouTube channel.
Yeah, yeah, I know that for certain it is.
Chairman? Chairman Lingefelter?
Yes.
So we do have a, we do have a contract with YouTube and there's, we have certain guidelines that we have to follow that might... um, that might uh, might be at issue here. And so, if people would just have the forum, um, that would be very helpful.
We don't-
Without censoring.
Well, we don't want our rules of order to say one thing to be in violation of YouTube's violation or policy, and then our board meetings aren't seen on YouTube.
Right, and we don't have, um, the equipment necessary at this point, I, from an IT standpoint, to have a ten-second delay like what we're used to on, you know, ESPN or something like that, so.
Uh, Clerk McDaniel.
Sure. Morning, Board. I will try to add some clarity to the question. Currently, we do put the board meetings on, I believe, channel thirty-six on the county's television district. Um, that's a, a deal that's set up with, uh, Joe Hart's old radio station. Um, so FCC rules do dictate what goes on national broadcast, so, you know, the sentiment there is we're trying to be cognizant of what FCC regulations are. As far as, uh, the way we operate relative to YouTube, I would have to review that more closely, but in general, you know, what we're trying to avoid is situations in the past where we had people that were wearing shirts that contained profanity and things like that. So, from a standard operating procedure, the way we operate in the AV room is that if someone's wearing something that's profane, uh, and would potentially give us problems from an FCC standpoint, we would just not show them, but their audio would still be heard. So, I mean, we still also have that problem if someone comes up here and starts using too many curse words. Uh, you know, there's, uh, some code of conduct things with YouTube that could potentially trigger, but we've never had anything like that occur. So, uh, and to the clerk's point, we have, uh, television studio-style equipment in that room, but we do not have the the ten-second delay buffer system to where we can beep out curse words and things like that.
So, so, bottom line is our rules of order should probably, say, uh, dress code, uh, comply with FCC and any use guidelines for a, a media channel like YouTube that's going to help us get um, our public meetings seen. Right, I can make that change if you want.
Sounds reasonable. I had one last question on-
Supervisor Lemon.
Attorney S. Blin, on page thirteen, item six, suspension of rules. These rules may be suspended upon affirmative vote of a majority of the members present. Can you clarify what, I think I know what that means, what you think that means?
Uh, certainly, Supervisor Lemon. Um, so this is a carryover from the previous one, so this is, this has been around for some time. I understand it as if the majority of the members say, "We don't want to follow these rules. We want to suspend them for a period of time during the meeting," then they could do that. Um, just, just a little bit of context to this. There's nothing in Arizona law that requires that a, a public body have a set of rules. There's, in, in terms of the open meeting laws, what you're trying to do is you're trying to provide notice to the public and agenda so that things are stated and conducted in public, so the notice and the members of the public body know what's coming, and, and you can plan for it, so it's all done in the open. But in terms of the order, how things are done, the process, Arizona law doesn't specify it. It really, really is bare bones. It's, it leaves it up to the public body, so the public body decides if they want to have rules or not. So if they want to suspend them and say, you know, "These aren't working for us", then a majority say, "We're going to suspend the rules," and you suspend it. At which point, then you decide how, how things proceed and progress. I don't know how that would work. I've never seen it. But that's, that's my idea of it.
Senate.
Either points, Supervisor Lemon?
That's it. Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Supervisor.
What are you, the chairman?
Mr. Chairman. Um, how it works in the legislature, sixteen votes in the Senate suspends the rules. Um, takes a two-thirds vote of the House of Representatives to suspend their rules. So if you have sixteen votes, you can do whatever you want. That's essentially what it works out. You can suspend the, there's certain things you can't suspend if they're in the Constitution, but if it's just a Senate rule, you could suspend it. So it might, might be a waiting period on, uh, when bills move to the floor, something like that. Yeah.
So you'd do the same thing here, but maybe like, you have to have a public hearing on a couple items. That has to be done, but other than that, it would, whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, you couldn't suspend things that are required by state law, by statute. But if, if it's our own rules, then you could suspend that. Or you make the rule to operate under-
Certainly.
All right, um, hearing no other input, I would be open to a motion that incorporates, uh, changes.
Want to do that, or you want to wait and see what the changes-
Up to the board.
Wait and see what the changes are.
Hey, you've heard that motion?
Second.
That motion second, any additional discussion? Hearing none? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. As appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. Item number forty-seven was pulled. Item number forty-eight, Director Palmer. This is discussion, possible action, review, and accept the February monthly report to the board regarding the medical examiner services and provide directions to staff regarding the plan for the transition of medical examiner services from the current contracted service provider to the county.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. This month's report is going to be a recap of visits that were conducted to Coconino County Medical Examiner's Office and our current contractor's office. Supervisor Martin and Supervisor Letman both traveled with me and the Assistant Health Director to Coconino County to see the medical examiner office there and, um, asked many questions. First of all, this physical operation, so their workload, a thousand cases with two hundred autopsies annually, and they currently have seventy-two unidentified remains in-house. Their services have been in-house for twenty to twenty-five years. And back to the workload, they do, um, autopsies and investigations for Navajo and Apache counties also. Coconino County is approximately eighty-three hundred square feet. They purchased the building from a, uh, online distributor and renovated it. Initially, the renovation was quoted at five to six million, and in the end, it cost them eight million dollars. Five hundred thousand dollars was for the equipment housed within the building, and they purchased that with a grant. They can currently store twenty-five bodies on site, and then they have off-site storage for eight. They plan on adding a sixteen-body cooler. They hold all bodies until tox screens come back, and that can take weeks. And they only have two funeral homes within the entire county. Challenges that they shared, um, as we were able to glean from their lessons learned, uh, most career early-career forensic pathologists do not want to go to a place where they are the sole medical examiner because they then cannot learn from a more seasoned medical examiner. It took a year and a half to recruit a forensic pathologist, and they also shared with us expect to pay three hundred to three hundred thousand per year for a forensic pathologist. And these photos within these slides are actual photos from the facility. Their staffing model, they have five full-time investigators that have been cross-trained and certified on all aspects of death investigation. They do an on-call rotation among the five. So they work Monday through Friday, eight to five, and then they're on call for the evenings and weekends, and they're paid a dollar per hour as they are on call. They're paid time and a half if they're called out outside of normal business hours. If called out on the weekend, they are then asked to come in and work a normal, what would be considered a normal shift, so an eight-hour shift within the office on that day, and then they take flex time later on during the week. They shared that this model has helped with the burnout that Coconino County was experiencing, but still, most investigators only stay on staff two to three years. They do utilize Northern Arizona University, which is their university within their county, to do an internship program. They stay with them for a year or two to learn. And then, when a position comes open within their medical examiner office, they are then able to slide that intern into a full-time permanent position. It decreases the amount of time that they spend on training new staff members. If no, if there are no death scenes to attend, the staff answer the main line and complete paperwork from that eight to five period. They shared that response times are slow using this model, and law enforcement regularly must wait one or more hours for investigators to arrive. They also shared with us that they are projected to see a million, over a million dollars in payroll in 2025. Personnel is their largest expense, closely followed by toxicology because of the sending the samples to a lab. Finances include thirty thousand dollars in overtime expenses annually. They shared with us that they recently were able to purchase a vehicle. It's an all-terrain vehicle which helps them go out into the areas within their county that are not paved roads. They did share with us that they experience a lot of individuals either from outside of the country coming in and hiking, and then not understanding the terrain and the, the different conditions that they are hiking within. And they may, um, succumb to those conditions. Or they experience individuals who go out to the the environment that they have there to end their life. So then they have to go out and retrieve them. Costs to have genetic testing done on unidentified bones is twenty-five thousand dollars. And then they shared additional costs, costs to consider, maintenance on equipment, insurance, supplies, utilities, especially electricity because of all the coolers that they have, and then any additional storage needs. Supervisor Letman and I were able to go visit the Mojave County contractor within Fort Mojave. We learned that twelve percent of the 2025 deaths so far in Mojave County have come through the Office of Medical Examiner. Workload in 2024 was a thousand one hundred and fifty-nine cases with a hundred and thirteen autopsies. Workload in 2023 was one thousand one hundred and eighty-two cases with a hundred and twenty-seven autopsies. And this information is more to provide a comparison between Coconino County and what we're experiencing here. We have seventeen unidentified remains with one tentatively being, currently being identified. It's being confirmed. Um, not yet confirmed, but working on it. Services have been contracted out for at least twenty years. Current building is approximately twelve hundred square feet of office space and three thousand square feet of warehouse. And when the medical examiner services moved from the Lake Havasu office over to the Fort Mojave office, it costs approximately forty thousand dollars in site renovations. Our site can currently store forty bodies, and toxicology and tissue samples are collected at time of death and/or at time of autopsy, so the body can then be released to the funeral home. And we have at least twelve funeral homes within our county to provide a comparison between Coconino and us. We learned a little bit more about the locations. So the current location in Fort Mojave is considered more centralized and decreases on mileage and time for transport due to most of the deaths occurring within the western region of the county, and I have some graphs coming up that will show where a lot of those deaths are occurring. Currently, we use two locums and Dr. Mosley. The locums were approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in 2024, and Dr. Mosley was approximately two hundred thousand in 2024. All expenses covered in the annual one point one-one, which is the current contract and purchase order. Expenses related to investigation and autopsies, no matter how many autopsies or investigations occur within the county. Investigators that respond twenty-four seven. Pathologists on-call for investigators on-scene, so if an investigator is on-scene and has any questions or is unsure about something, they can contact a pathologist immediately. Identification of unidentified remains, including the anthropologist that is utilized to ID bones. Locum forensic pathologist and locum pathology assistants. Maintenance of equipment, including X-ray machine and coolers, utilities, including electricity, and vehicles and fuel. This shows the regions. I tried to divide it up in, in areas that we could identify from the western versus everything else. So our north district here, it's District Four, so that's going to be Dolan Springs, Meadview, and White Hills. And eastern is going to be Kingman and Peach Springs. South District One is Wikiup. North District One is going to be Colorado City, Beaver Dam, Littlefield, and Canebeds. And western is Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, Mojave Valley, and Fort Mojave. And then this is split up according to, um, cities and towns. And then, um, Supervisor Martin is scheduled to visit the current contractor tomorrow at eleven AM, and that is open to any other supervisor that would also like to attend. Any questions?
Presmart.
A locum is the pathologist that isn't necessarily on staff. It's more like a contracted individual. So there's a contract for that physician to come in and do the autopsies when our physician is not available, when our pathologist is not available.
Listen, if you'd, uh, stay in the front, we've got two people that have signed up to speak. Okay, uh, I'll, I'll get to you. Doctor Daniel, um, Sidolowski. Excuse me if I pronounce that wrong. Jennifer Esposito, you're on deck.
Hello, I'm Doctor Daniel Sidolowski, a pathologist here in Kingman. I appreciate you giving me your time, Board of Supervisors. Um, as a laboratory director, I want to, uh, I, um, appreciate your comments on continuous, uh, quality improvement and cost effectiveness in an earlier discussion. It's sort of our mantra. Um, I had a personal, uh, conversation with Doctor Madsen, the Coconino County Medical Examiner, this morning. Longer than I expected. I think he's lonely since he's been alone for so long. Um, but he did clarify one thing that was on the presentation. Um, they do not hold bodies for toxicology. Um, they do toxicology on most bodies, but he says eighty percent of their bodies are released to the families within twenty-four hours, so they do not hold them for weeks. Ninety-seven percent are released within seventy-two hours. He is adamant, as I am, that that is the standard in this state, um, as well as the rest of the United States for this mandated service. There are exceptions, uh, in terms of difficult-to-ID individuals or the, uh, tourism, uh, impact in terms of international or people from out of town where there are logistical issues. Um, he was also pretty candid about the fact that that facility is somewhat of a white elephant, and it was built during a time when Coconino County had significant revenue surplus, apparently, and they built not only this building, but other fairly extravagant, uh, county buildings between two thousand eighteen and two thousand and twenty. Um, I think this board should be aware that there are other models that are viable, uh, that are, uh, um, not been explored previously, that can be rapidly implemented, are going to be far more cost-effective than this, and will provide the standard, uh, level of service that the citizens of this county deserve. Um, that, and also will be budget-neutral, uh, relative to what the county is spending now with minimal investment into infrastructure. Uh, my colleague, Doctor Swop, sent each of you an email this morning, um, outlining one of those models. Uh, I think that the citizens of this county will be best served if this board explores and pursues other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. First, I would like to just start out by saying that if two or more of you do attend that tour tomorrow, you will need to post a notice of possible quorum. Just putting that out there to follow, you know, all the rules. The one thing that I have not heard yet, despite months and months and months and months and months of discussion on this, is what does Little La Paz just south of us do? I mean, somehow tiny little historically dysfunctional La Paz doesn't seem to have this problem. So we've never investigated that and no one's instructed staff to investigate that. And staff hasn't taken it upon themselves to figure that one out. Of course, staff has a conflict of interest being on the KIH board for the hospital. But here's my idea. If what La Paz is doing is financially feasible, maybe we could partner with them and find a way to save money. And if what we're doing or what we're proposing is more feasible for La Paz, maybe we could partner with them and sell them our services and help cover the costs. I don't know, just me thinking outside the box since nobody but me has actually thought of this. The other thing I would like to again point out to the board is it's a wonderful idea to use the existing facility at the current hospital, but since you, the county, we, the people, own the building, the only way that that would be financially feasible is if you negotiate the lease so that you get that for $0.00 per square foot, because $18 per square foot. I don't know. Not in the best interest of the taxpayers. So we own it, we could put it there, we could put it somewhere else, but maybe before you make a final decision on how to spend the taxpayer money on this long debated issue, you might want to find out what La Paz is doing because that may make a decision on where you want to locate it. I don't know, just the public thinking outside the box again. Thank you.
Now, Melissa, can you come back up? Director Palmer, excuse me. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wondered if, did we know how long it took Mr. Hasslett to relocate the medical examiner office from Lake Havasu to Fort Mojave?
It was, I believe, within two weeks. Mr. Hassett's here to speak to that. As he's coming down to answer that, to answer Ms. Esposito's question about La Paz County, they currently send their deceased individuals out to other counties to do autopsies. They do not have services within our county.
Chairman, if I could also jump in?
Attorney Esplin, go ahead.
Just for the board's knowledge, the long, long time ago, the county sold the hospital, everything involved with it, to the hospital district. The county does not own that building at all, at the hospital, or the land there.
So the special district is the owner of the building?
The special district owns it. There's a lease arrangement with the nonprofit there, I believe is how it's arranged, but the county has no involvement. I'm looking at Resolution 1827, this was in 1983. And therefore be resolved, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors sell the county owned hospital facility and hospital real property to hospital district number one. That was back in 1983. And we haven't had it since, I think, I think the transaction was finalized in 1984.
Saved yourself a bunch of emails.
I can email those to you as well.
Press Gould, did you have questions for the?
Yeah, Mr. Hasslett, how long did it take you to relocate your medical examiner office from Lake Havasu to Fort Mojave?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould, we had been using that facility for a little over about a year and a half as a substation facility for Fort Mojave staff. And when we executed the move, it was roughly 30 to 45 days total.
So it wasn't months and months and months?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Letman.
Director Palmer, so I have a lot of questions and I'm gonna refer back to the presentation on January 21st, also this one. And I apologize for not letting you know that in advance. So this is just one of the most perplexing issues I've seen. I've gone back and watched the videos of the board meetings from last year. And my office staff and I were kind of bouncing this one around and we're just, what is the objective of this medical examiner's office? And I'll tell you what we came up with. I'd like, I'd like the medical examiner to issue death certificates following the rules and done in a timely manner. That just seems like a really basic objective. I think the medical examiner should be respectful to families, friends, doctors. And very importantly, the medical examiner needs to be cost effective in the delivery of the services. So we've already heard a reference to what's best for the taxpayers and I couldn't agree more on this one. This just looks like a great example of zero based budgeting in its infancy. This would be an area I would definitely take a look at with that. I divided the, and you correct me if I'm wrong on this, but to me, there's three basic components of this service. The first is the professional services, the doctors, the pathologists. And it seems like the two camps, the two groups, kind of close on this one. And then there's the reoccurring expenses. And I went back to this document from January. I'm still not sure what county staff is saying the incremental cost or the cost over the 1.1 million of the existing contract would be. But I saw three items in there that were deserved to look at. And then one was obviously the staff, not the non-professional services, the occupancy cost and the operating expenses. And then there was this third component, the morgue, itself, a physical building, which is currently is, as we saw in our visit to Fort Mojave, that's included in our contract with Serenity for the 1.1 million. So I thought we'd focus, and you correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, we'd focus on as we choose to bring this in-house. So as I understand this premise, we think bringing a service from a private contractor into government, that we can do it more efficiently and for less money. Okay, which I almost wish Elon was sitting in the front row of this auditorium for this. So I looked at work rules and pay rates. Now, Serenity has their people on a salaried basis, I believe you and I discovered during the visit. Would the county have any of the staff positions on salaried basis?
I'm not sure about the answer for all of them. I believe our physician or our pathologist would be the manager of it.
They're separate. I'm talking about the non-doctors, the non-MDs. I am assuming when we made this, that we were assuming they weren't.
Yes, so if Director Moran could answer that.
Chairman Lingfelter, Supervisor Letman. I believe when we went through the salary, the personnel, that the technicians were all in below salary range 18 on our, on our county schedule, which would have put them in an hourly position.
Okay. I agree. So if they're going to be hourly, and I just picked a number out of the air, and let's talk a little bit about work rules and the impact on the conversion. I'm just going to assume Mr. Hassett's paying his people, I'll pick a number, $25 an hour. I don't know if that's high, low, right on. So does Serenity Group, do they have a mandatory retirement program? No, I think we heard no. However, if those employees came into the county fold, are they required to join the Arizona State Retirement System?
Yes, they are. All county employees have to participate.
And that would require that I deduct, so if I'm bringing them over at $25 an hour, they're not going to come over if I have a mandatory deduction of 12.5% out of their paycheck. That's unlikely. So I would probably have to add, to begin with, 12.5% to their rate of pay. That takes it up to $28.13 an hour. Then an added bonus, I get to tack another 12.5% on top of that because we have to pay it. They're now up to $31.64 an hour. And that's before they ask for a merit increase, which I'm assuming is going to be highly likely. Holidays and overtime. So yesterday was a holiday, President's Day. If Serenity has their employees on salary, I'm assuming there is no holiday rate of pay for these people? Correct? Yeah. Are we required, if we have a technician working for the medical examiner's office and they work on a holiday yesterday, are we required to give them holiday pay?
Supervisor Letman, yes, that would be.
I know, that's a silly, it's, I get it. And I'm assuming if they work more than 32 hours in the week, which is highly possible in this line of business, they get even more overtime, correct?
Supervisor Letman, the rules for overtime in Arizona is anything over 40 hours in a week.
What about a holiday week?
It's, it's the actual hours that are worked regardless. So if they worked in a holiday week, if they worked more than, physically worked more than 40 hours. So let's say Monday was a holiday, eight hours of holiday, they would have to work more than 40 hours during, during that week in order to qualify for overtime.
Okay, so during our visit to Coconino and to the facility in Fort Mojave, we talked about on-call status for these technicians, which seems to be a requirement of the position. We don't know when people are going to die. So you have to be ready to go. I believe I heard at both facilities that, or at least at the Fort Mojave facility, that on-call is allowed to be done from home. And Director, one of you, where does an employee have to be here in Mojave County to be on-call? Where would you plan on these people being, working for the medical examiner? May they work from home?
If it was during normal county business hours, they would need to be in the office.
Okay, so they're going to be sitting in a Mojave County facility waiting for the call?
If it's Monday through Friday, 8 to 5.
Yeah, that's a great work role. Then we have the whole work from home status. Are, do we allow our employees to work from home?
Not at this time.
Okay. So I see some issues with, with work rules in this conversion. Okay, and I can see where the added expense is starting to come from. Now, on the flip side of that, Coconino County appeared to be operating around, as we noted before, around a million dollar budget. The service calls, the number of autopsies seem kind of close to each other. We seem to have a significant number of more employees for our projected plan. Do we know why that is?
It's due to having employees at each city so that way they could respond quicker and to have a float so that way if somebody has to be out on PTO, somebody's out on FMLA, then we have somebody to cover those areas.
Okay. Then this third issue was the morgue and I, depending on who you believe on this, so it starts at a 2.5 million to convert a county facility. I assume that would come out of the general fund, Luke? Okay. And going up to a contribution to have the work done over at Kingman Regional Medical Center. So I would just like to know a couple of things, and I'm assuming that capex or capital improvement funds do in fact come out of the general fund, which is already under stress, okay, going into the new fiscal year. So I would like to know in our next update, a couple of things. What is the actual estimate of the additional reoccurring expenses to bring this in-house? And I don't mean the professional folks, the non-MDs. What's it going to be? Okay, knowing what our work rules are at. And I think you might want to have a different set of FTEs for this. I forget what your FTE projection was on this, but it was considerably above the five or seven they have in Coconino. So, you know, the justification for that, okay? I think we need to pay a lot of attention to the Coconino County expense structure of this department. It does seem to be reasonably close to what Serenity is giving us today. Okay, and I think that's worth looking at. I had a couple of questions for Attorney Esplin. Is there an actual termination date to this service with, with Serenity Group?
I'd have to look at the terms of the contract. I can't recall. Is it, are we on a, are we on a month to month at this point?
We are on month to month.
And month to month just keeps going until we do something.
Until a decision's made and we start moving in a direction.
And we've heard from the competing group of pathologists who, who want to perform the service, that they would like to do that. Is, so Attorney Esplin, is there in fact a direct path for them to create an unsolicited offer to take this work?
For something like this, it's got to go through the procurement process.
Okay, so it sounds like we need to go back to RFP. That's kind of what I'm hearing, unless we choose to bring this in-house. And just for this supervisor only, I won't speak for my colleagues, but I see a real fiscal challenge in terms of availability of capital in dollars to bring this in-house. I would love to see the folks from the pathology group here in Kingman come up with a proposal to take all of Serenity's employees over to their side of the operation. And they would have much more flexibility regarding work rules. But right now, I don't see a lot of impetus to move this baby in-house at all, but that's just my opinion.
Supervisor Letman, Chairman, if I may, just clarify, when I say procurement, what I mean is it could be that we, that we extend the current contract through the procurement process or that we go through an RFP or the other mechanisms that the procurement office has. So it may not be an RFP, it could be one of the other mechanisms that they use, or it could be that we extend the current contract through procurement is what I meant by that.
Okay, so we heard the doctor mentioned that, you know, he would, he would like to offer these services at a price that's competitive. I'd like to see that in writing, the proposal. And it sounds like it's almost a response to an RFP.
It is an RFP.
Mr. Chairman?
Andrew.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and, and board members, Supervisor Letman, just a couple of points perhaps to clarify. We, when, when we started this process and as we learned more and presented it to the board, we have believed all along and have told the board, the incumbent board members, I hope would remember that, that it would cost us more to bring it in-house than to continue with the process that we're in. We, we did not, we did not suggest or imply to the board that we can do it cheaper for many of the reasons that you, you mentioned and referenced in your comments. The, the other point that I wanted to highlight is, you know, we, we got to where we are because we experienced an interruption or disruption in those services. And we have, as I think you stated, or maybe the chairman or other board members, we have been at this for some time. And there are really three different models out there. One is the current one that we have, where all services are contracted out. The other model is the ones that our neighboring counties have, where neighboring counties, specifically Coconino and Yevapai, where they have it all in-house. And the third one is where you have a hybrid system where it's, it's, some are in-house and some are contracted out. The model that is contracted out and often is referred to is what our other neighbor uses, which is Yuma County, where they have the pathology services contracted out through a third party and then the rest of it, the investigators, the technicians and such are in-house but are part of the sheriff's department. In our consultation, at leading up to presentations to the board and the decision which direction we go to, the sheriff has made it clear that he's not interested in having those services. And just so you know, I personally do not believe that that is a successful model. So we're back to which direction, which, which model do we go with? And when, and we did procure those services after much consultation and discussion at the board level and with providers, we did package. And as you all know, when you use the request for proposal abbreviated as RFP for services, you, you compile a package that says, here's what we want and you go and propose on it. And that's, that's what we brought to the board just last year and the board opted to not act on it and, and stay with the current arrangements. So your points are valid, they're appreciated. I sincerely and greatly appreciate the interest to check out those facilities. At the end of the day, we really do not have. At the end of the day, we really do not have an agenda other than these are mandated services, we have to provide them, and we want to provide them in the most dignified and cost-efficient way that we can to our county residents. And it has been, you know, it has been the, it has been a challenge that we've repeatedly told you about that led us to this point.
Supervisor Letman? Thank you for those remarks. So I think it's important to note that we have a baseline, 1.1 million annually. And I would encourage the group from Kingman, if they think they can beat that offer, I don't know, again, I'm not clear from the attorney if they can make an unsolicited offer or not. It doesn't sound like they can. Then either we stop this process of going in-house because we simply don't have the money, okay, to support the reoccurring expense, and we certainly don't have the money to build a morgue. Okay, I just don't see it at this point. And every dollar we take away to do this effort above that 1.1 million baseline is money that we're going to remove out of sheriff's deputies, county prosecutors, public defenders, jailers. And I think, at least for this supervisor, I know where my priorities are at, and it's in law enforcement.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Borelli? Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes, to that point, this is, that's, it falls into the public safety realm. I mean, we're talking murder investigations, all these homicides, it's got to be investigated. And if they don't have the right people to do that, some murder gets it's all scot-free because the autopsy was not done right. But this actually falls under that public safety umbrella.
You know, I'll give a little bit different perspective and try to be brief, but I came here in 2004 and Mojave County has always had a direct contract with the doctor. Until now, because the doctor we had didn't want to do it anymore, so then we had to go to what was called an unorthodox model. And it was supposed to be a temporary solution. So all of a sudden, we've gone from a temporary solution to a long-term permanent. I don't mean this to be disrespectful, but unless you're a medical, a pathologist or a medical examiner, I don't see the value that you add. It needs to be a direct contract between Mojave County and a doctor. Like it always has. And I think that there's, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Espeland, but I think that there's potential liability issues for us not having direct contract with doctors. That's just my. So this is a service where you're never going to make money. The goal is to limit the bleeding as much as you can because you're never going to cut on top. It's always going to be a loss, but it's mandated. The reason we were looking at what it would cost to bring staff in-house, I mean, that was just, we asked to bring the information. It wasn't, you know, definitively, this is the direction we're going on. This is, we need to have this information in order to make informed choices. A big reason why we've always had, this county's always had a problem with getting a doctor to take this on, this whole lot of thing, is because they didn't want to supply. And that's why I was looking at buying a building. If we took that out of the equation, we supplied a building, would we have more success in getting a doctor? Take? And the staff? But I think that if a new solicitation goes out, it needs to be stated in there that, in accordance with statute, that we need to have a direct contract with the county.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you eloquently highlighted, we've always had a doctor up to 2021. Until when the doctor said he no longer wanted to do the complete set of, complete package. He, as a forensic pathologist, wanted to do just those services. So we retained that model and went out twice to get somebody under contract, and both times there was zero submittals. So necessity dictated that we consider other options. And when the option that we have today became available, it was pursued, brought to the board, and a contract was awarded, as you indicated, it was intended to be short-term. It was supposed to be three years with option to renew, two, one additional years to allow for us, at least at that time, to bring it in-house. The feedback, the public feedback that we received, you were both here for all of it. The public feedback that we received at that time was that it should be brought in-house, and that was what mitigated, or that was what compelled us to start considering that option, bring it in-house. The one that I want to end with is if you go in the direction that you contract the pathology services out, you have to have individuals with the ability to do all the forensic, all the forensic services under the contract, or you will end up having to do what we did back in 2021, or what Yuma does today, the Yuma model, requires an additional intergovernmental agreement with another county that has the ability to provide all forensic services in order to get their, to serve their residents. They have to transport those autopsies that require forensic pathology to Penale County, and we have copies of those agreements, and we know how much it's costing them. That's what we did with both Yavapai and Coconino in 2021 when we had that short-term disruption. So there isn't really a simplified slam dunk, easy solution. We've learned a lot, we've shared all of that with the board. We know there are those models, some work better than others, all of them cost plenty. These are mandated services. We're ready and prepared to go with whatever direction you, the board, feel is the best suited to serve the county residents. But the costs associated with it and the challenges are, I think, now pretty well-known and pretty evident from the trips that staff and board members have made and the information that we continue to gather and share with you.
Thank you. Were there specific requests to be included in the next update?
Mr. Chairman, I think I heard you ask what specific direction you want from staff for the next meeting?
I heard Supervisor Letman mention a few things that he wanted to see, and perhaps others on the board, as things that they'd like to see as well. Supervisor Letman, is that? I can clarify, so I would certainly like to see just a definitive number, what's it going to cost to run this thing next year? In the next fiscal year? And take a look at the Coconino model, and then the model using the FTEs that you think are required. Because there is a significant delta between Coconino and Mojave when you look at the two models. Okay, in terms of cost, the staffing component is, there's a very large difference between the two, and I think we should address why that is. I would certainly enjoy something, staff can't provide this, from the group of doctors here in Kingman. What's their proposal? And again, I think the idea of having a contract with the doctors is a good idea. I just don't think it's worth tagging the taxpayers for a two-and-a-half-million-dollar morgue plus the incremental expense. Maybe they would like to take that in-house, similar to the way that Serenity's been doing. But that's what I would.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry.
All right, that's the last comments, and we'll go to the next.
Okay, just to clarify, just so we provide you what you're looking for, a really quick comment. The number of individuals that were included in the estimate that was provided to the board already was based really on two factors. One is what we have today in the way of personnel, and the other is the size of the county and the desire to provide efficient services and timely ones, because in our discussion with both the county attorney's office and the sheriff's office leading up to the RFP, what we heard was our officers end up waiting a longer period of time because it's a large county and we don't we don't know where the death is going to occur, so for investigators to get there. If it's necessary, sometimes, my understanding is they do it through phone and communication that way. So we asked, what is the optimal number of individuals to provide these services? And we need an office manager to oversee those services. And that's the number that we listed and we priced. If we need to cut that price back, we certainly can, but we all know what the outcome of that will be. It will be just some longer periods. The other that I would say to you, and is more of a personal comment. My daughter-in-law worked for Coconino County as an investigator for about four years, and only recently left that department and went to work elsewhere for Coconino County. The inside stories that I learned and heard from, and the challenges that come with it are very real and cannot be overstated. So when we say we present the number of individuals and the intent of a dignified service, and that everything is done in one location, whether it be an out or in or hybrid, but that the forensic services provided be provided in one location without having to transport death across county lines and back.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item and listen.
I, Chairman Lingefelter, if I could add one more thing. The other item with the staffing was Mr. Hassett and one of his staff members from his organ, or from his business, oversee all the administrative items, and we do not have that currently. So the staffing includes somebody to handle that. As we have found, medical examiner, forensic pathologist, they do not want to do the paperwork or day-to-day business part of it, they just want to come in and do autopsies. So Mr. Hassett and his office staff handle that for us.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Palmer, did your proposed model, did I hear you correctly, you were going to station investigators in the three cities and then possibly Colorado, the strip area also?
Definitely two in each city location, and then one float in the southern cities. If we had the opportunity, we would put somebody up north, but there are numbers of deaths that occur. It wouldn't necessarily be a priority straight out of the gate.
So these people would be sitting there doing what when there's three calls a day?
Well, it depends on which model we go towards, because when we were looking at the staffing, we were looking at having somebody on nights and somebody on days, not necessarily doing what Coconino does, which is Monday through Friday, eight to five, and then on-call the rest of the time. So we would have somebody potentially working Sunday through Thursday, and then somebody working Friday through Sunday, or however that would shake out, where we could then split up staff so that we don't have somebody working seven days a week.
I think that was really the big difference between the two models, is they were being more creative in their staffing. What was the dollar an overtime?
A dollar an hour is the on-call pay. So if they were on-call from 5:01 PM until 7:59 AM, they get a dollar because they can't necessarily go out of town, they can't, they can't leave their area. So in order to provide staff with some sort of way of justifying them not being able to do extracurricular activities, you pay them a dollar an hour.
So they get that plus whatever their wages are when they actually get called out?
If they get called out, it's time and a half.
Okay.
And one last thing, really good to Supervisor Gould. What they did and appeared to do some success is they cross-trained. So the investigators could also be technicians, they can do paperwork, and the technician could also assist a pathologist when they're doing autopsies, supervisor. So they cross-trained to the extent possible, so if they're not getting called out, they're finishing paperwork, they're completing tasks, or they're assisting.
If we were going to have our folks spread out across the county, not all of that will be available to them, that would be wherever the morgue ends up being.
Sure, and I understand, honestly, I'm just saying, not every one of them could do those things, but as you as you lay out the schedule, if you could keep that in mind, that would help with some of those scheduling.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to item number forty-nine.
Mr. Chairman?
We have one person sign up to speak. Would you like to hear them first?
Sure.
Jennifer Esposito, go on down.
Thank you. This item is regarding settling with Mr. Ryan Freworth, the former member of the Mojave County Fairgrounds. You did him wrong. Pay him. Settle. Okay, I'm just putting that out there, you know?
That might be the topic, never mind. That's the topic.
Retract.
I'm sorry, what?
Continue, go ahead and continue.
Oh.
I was confused, carry on.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Yeah, you got me confused for a second. But no, I mean, the county's, the board's job should be to keep the county out of litigation. I know that this board has a longstanding habit of digging its heels in and saying, we don't want to settle and we don't want to. But if you're doing a employee wrong, settle. Because court costs a long time, and that KP Ventures lawsuit's now parked in the Court of Appeals, and my case over our right of initiative and referendum in GVID is parked in the Court of Appeals. And like, you know, just end the madness and settle with the poor guy. All right, just my two cents for what it's worth as someone who knows a little bit about the situation. Just consider it. Okay, thank you.
Entertained a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
I move that the attorney move ahead with the action discussed in executive session.
Heard that motion in second. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As sure to have it, do you have it? So ordered. Call to the public, Mr. McClure, Scotty McClure.
Well, I'm sure, you know, Scotty from Bullhead. I'm sure glad I arrived at nine o'clock five hours ago, because call to the public is last. Thank you, three of you people sitting up there. Night court, I didn't get a chance to say anything about night court, and I brought it up the week, two weeks before that. And the way it was put on the agenda, I got knocked out. The newspaper's on my side that we at least look at this stuff. AI, they're already using it, AI down there to get rid of the clerks down in Phoenix. Whether it's a county or city, I don't know. You don't need a bailiff if you have certain things at night. You don't need one, or you got a divorce where both parties are agreeing, you don't even need lawyers there. There's, you need to look at this a little bit more. Because why not use an existing courtroom? You don't have to build one. You don't have, there's certain things you can do at night. The main thing is you got to have a judge that's being willing to work at night and a girl, you know, the clerks. When are we going to, when is the public, including you guys are part of the public too, when are we going to get access to a grand jury or start a civil grand jury? This has been going on for way too long, that one person owns the grand jury in this county, his boss. I want access to the grand jury. I made charges against Eli Angus, and I took it up in an envelope and put it on Ryan, gave it to the secretary, and he held on to it for six months. He sent it back to me unopened. It didn't even- It didn't even make it to the grand jury. This was about her phone call with the CEOs with that plant down there, Ron. You, you read that letter. I sent it to the grand jury and it sat in the envelope, unopened. It was so dusty. I want access to a grand jury and I see we have somebody else is going to bring that I want to know, are we cooperating? Is the Sheriff Schuster cooperating with ICE? That's a question I want to answer. If not, I think that ought to be on the agenda. Haven't had heard Schuster over here saying anything about it or anybody else bringing that up, but I think we ought to be more than willing to have ICE go right through there one at a time.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. I didn't get to finish my commentary on the record of the mentally unhinged behavior of Doddering Dawn in District Four. So I would also like to add to what I said earlier is that during the campaign, he sent his kid to photograph our home and at an event in Medview with the National Park Service, he, as it ended, my husband and I were walking up to speak to the park service director, Doddering Dawn over here clasped both hands together, made the finger gun, pointed it at my husband and I and went pew, pew, like that. So I'm of the personal opinion that Doddering Dawn has a lot more to fear from cancer than he does constituents. Just my personal opinion. Now, earlier you mentioned something about water conservation. So I don't know, I'm going to put this up here and see if you can see it. All right. Whoop, come on, the towel way, there we go. Okay. I don't know if you can see it, but that's a video of the Hilltop wastewater treatment plant in Kingman dumping millions and millions, millions of gallons of treated wastewater effluent onto the desert to evaporate. In the February, or the January issue, excuse me, of the Mojave Free Press on page eight, available at MojaveFreePress Press dot blogspot dot com, you can read the article about the injection well that the city of Kingman spent an awful lot of money on to put that wastewater treatment effluent back into the aquifer. They estimated on their own press release that it was going to be about 22% of the city's current water demand at the time, which I'm sure has gone up since we've added all these new houses that we probably don't have the water for because the state determined that at the current estimate used that they come up with in 2022, one in 20 wells would run dry within 100 years. Now, I don't know how, you know, how many months this had been going on, but from the time I was notified to the time I took that video, several months had gone by and I waited to see if they would stop before I put it in the paper. So that, because the Walapai Aquifer affects more than just the city of Kingman, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, lastly, since Mr. Esplin was nice enough to explain to you that the hospital is owned by the hospital district board, I'd like to point out that the Golden Valley Improvement District was owned by GVID until the board failed and there was no more board. Well, the problem that you have is that the hospital district board one doesn't function any longer, hasn't had an actual meeting since October, can't get a quorum. Now, it's my understanding, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not legal for KIH to deposit money into the district one board's account to pay the lease without a meeting approving these sorts of things. Now, I know that the auditors have shown up and I don't think the audit's done and I don't think the lease and the GMIs are done either, might want to look into it. Thank you.
Walter Spar. Yes, sir.
I appear today for the purpose of requesting each of you to have a meeting with me, sit-down meeting face to face. The issue is regarding the grand jury. We have attorneys from Maricopa County that come into this county and commit crimes during criminal litigation. They overload our, our judicial system and our, our judges just roll over and our county attorney has refused to allow the grand jury to see the evidence of the criminal conduct. If you will meet with me, I will show you 71 criminal acts that these, these attorneys committed. It is uncontroversial evidence because it's uncontroversial. All of the evidence that I will show you are in their presentations. The county attorney has all these documents. He knows and for some reason he's protecting these attorneys. I don't know why, but he's doing that. I will meet with you at your, any, any location you designate, you, at your office or you can come to my office. I need to have an answer from you, yes or no, by Friday of this week. Please let me know. If you do not answer by Friday, I will take that as a no. Gentlemen, this is extremely important. It's a, it's a constitutional issue. The people have a constitutional right to go and present criminal evidence to the grand jury and there is no law that prohibits them from doing that. And I know that you have received comments from other people who say that you are not allowed to legislate law in conflict with state law. Well, of course not. What I ever pose, it supports the case law from state law. It does not conflict with state law in any way whatsoever. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you. We're adjourned.